December 11th, meeting with Tiverton Town Council, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Mallon?
Counselor Shabbat, present. Counselor Ryan?
Present.
Counselor Hilton?
Present.
Counselor DiMediris?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor LaBeau?
Here.
Counselor Perry is absent.
Approval of consent agenda. Approval of the regular session meeting minutes of November 27, 2017. Approval of the executive session minute meeting on November 26. Approval of special meeting minutes of November 6. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Conservation Commission, Charter Review Commission 2, Board of Canvases, Planning Board Casino Subcommittee. Correspondence received and filed. Country View Estate Citizen Association Incorporated invitation to attend meeting of the Country View Estate Citizen Association on December 20, 2017. Discover new part fiscal year ended March 31, 2017. Annual audit report. Tiverton wastewater district update on Phase 1 sewer expansion project. Leona J. Sylvia regarding use of property at 428 South Lake Road and solicitor's response. Town clerk approval of Bay Street. Random, I don't know why I can't say that word right now. Maritoria, okay, extension to June 30, 2018. Susan Gell, Planning Board Administrator Office, November report. Town Administrator, Fire Department overtime for November 2017. Town Administrator, monthly department reports for November. Planning Board recommendation scheduling of public hearings date to be determined on zoning ordinance, Article 6, Section 1 Yard Regulation, Article 6, Section 2, 3 accessory structures, and Article 2 definition, and Article 5, Section 1 District Dimensional Regulations. Planning Board recommendation scheduling of public hearing date to be determined on Article 4, Section 5 H Public Utility Uses, Section 6 J Open Recreation Uses, Article 10, Section 3 Parking Storage, and Use of Major Recreational Equipment in Residential Districts. Planning Board recommendation scheduling of public hearing date to be determined on new Article Sola Photovoltaic System Developments. Anyone from the council wish to take anything off the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Counselor LaBeau?
Three D.
Anyone else?
I didn't hear what three D.
Three D.
Three D.
Madam President.
LJ Sylvia.
Counselor Hilton?
CA 9, please.
Anyone else?
Madam President.
Counselor Edwards?
There's no one else that'd like to make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda minus 3D and CA 9.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? CA 3D, Counselor LaBeau.
Madam President, I ran into LJ out in the parking lot, and he questioned me about what was going on, and he had talked to the administrator about the issues going on on that property at 428 Lake Road, and I couldn't give him his answer, so I invited him up here to get his answer, if that's okay.
Um, sure.
Madam President.
It's in our correspondence with the soliciting answer. Tony, would you like to address this?
Okay.
My, my, is he here?
He is.
LJ, you here somewhere?
Yeah, he's right there.
Stand up so I can see you, will you? Yeah, would you? That way you can ask any question, I think. I'm not really sure how all this stuff works yet.
As long as it's all right with the council. Yeah, it's fine.
If you have a question, I mean, you need to.
I have a lot of questions.
Tony?
The, as I reported to you, the case against Tiger Tree and the Pelleteers has gone up to the Supreme Court, there's been arguments. Basically, what's happening now is we're waiting for a decision on that. There's two other cases pending. One case is filed by the town, the other case was filed by the Pelleteers against the town. The strategy was to let the Supreme Court case be decided because it would be determinative as to what the town would do going forward on this matter. So that's the way that those cases stand. We're pretty much at the end of the Supreme Court case. That's going to govern what we do going forward. The town's insurance carrier is involved with the two Superior Court cases. They're gearing up for what they're going to be doing on their end in the case, but they do want to see what the Supreme Court decides on the, on the underlying case.
So is he being fined in the meantime $500 a day, like I was threatening?
Mr. Sylvia, I'm sure we have to be very careful, right? Because it is a litigation.
I'm wondering if he's being fined, because in 2010, I received a cease and desist because of this whole thing, which I was a registered business owner in the town. I was receiving 1099s from the town, from Open Space, and from Tiverton School Department, which I was doing work for, and I was told that if I kept operating out of there, just storing my equipment at my property, where there's hundreds of businesses doing it, I would be fined $500 a day fine. So I stopped bringing my equipment home, I bought industrial land, I moved on and moved forward. This guy, Tiger Tree, who turned me in, has a sign out front with no permit, Tiger Tree Landscaping, has employees, I mean, you read the letter, I sent the letter to all the council members, he's in an awkward watershed, he has employees, it's 10 times worse than what I was doing. I did the right thing, and now I drive by there, and yet you can see stockpiles from the road, you can, and nobody's doing anything. And I understand that it's in court, but if I was threatened $500 a day fine, why isn't he being charged $3,500 a week every week he operates out of there? Why is that okay?
This is, I'm not saying it's okay. You're talking about the East Avenue property?
I'm talking about South Lake Road, yeah, exactly, East Road.
That's, we're talking about the same property?
Yes, exactly.
I'm aware of the situation. Unfortunately, this matter got, that also got balled up in three cases, and we're proceeding on that basis. The difference is, is on this one, you're a lawyer, law-abiding, you are a law-abiding citizen, doing what you were supposed to do.
Exactly.
The response over here was to go to court, and, you know, several cases were filed, and we're working our way through that. So to answer your question, we need to have those cases resolved before we can go forward on these things.
So I, my new property, can I store equipment at my new property?
Where's your new property?
On 3998 Main Road in Tiverton.
I, I, I gotta tell you, I don't, I'm not.
Because everybody else is doing it in Hong Kong.
Yeah, but you're not, you can't.
You know what I mean, though?
I know what you're saying, LJ.
By the way, I, I know you.
So why, why is it that, you know what I mean? And then, it not to have a sign out front, not to have anything, stockpiles, no employees, no nothing, and yet people have signs, stockpiles, everything else, and nobody's doing anything? Why, I don't understand. It's very discouraging when you go out, and now I have another tax bill for industrial property, I have all this stuff, and, you know what I mean? And then what happens on Crandall Road, what she was doing on Crandall Road should have been industrial, and he paid a dollar fine, $1.
LJ.
It's frustrating.
I got your answer for you, now is not the time. But it's being litigated, and in the end, everything will wash out.
I, I, I.
So what do I have to do to go forward as far as keeping equipment at my property if I wanted to sell my industrial land?
Let me answer your first question first, and your second question second. First thing is, is I inherited all three of these cases.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're getting to the end of them, it's been a bitter fight on it, but, you know, hopefully we'll get a resolution, I agree with what Councilman LaBeau said. Secondly, you know, I gotta tell you, I don't, you're asking me a question, I don't like to answer those questions unless I do the research on it and make sure that I'm saying what the facts are and everything, which I, I don't know, I'm not, I can't do that right now because you just, you just asked me. I really need to take a look at it.
Is it zoning that I have to go to for that?
Well, I'd start with the zoning official, yes, but I don't, I'm not, you're asking me a question, I can't give you the answer because I haven't even taken a look at it.
All right.
You don't want one of these.
Well, first of all, we'd have to find out if 3998, what's that zoned, and I'm not quite sure.
It's zoned residential. See, no, oh, I don't know if I want to go into it yet.
You don't want to go into it, we, we.
But there, there has been a zone, so a year or two after I have received this, I will go into it for just a minute, just so you know. A year or two after I received that cease and desist, another landscaper came here that was buying residential land in front of the zoning board, and they okayed him to keep equipment on his property, and it was unanimous.
What year was that?
I want to say it was in probably 2012. And it was a public hearing, and a woman behind this property stood up and said, "I don't want to keep an equipment there, isn't it against town ordinance to store equipment?" And they said, "Well, technically, he's not running a business there, he's just parking equipment there." So how do you think I felt sitting in the back of that crowd, saying to myself, "I sold my house, I bought industrial land, I've moved forward, and now it's okay to store equipment at your property?" So somewhere along the line, everybody's got to get on the same page, that's all we're asking for, consistency, you know what I mean? Like, you can't, Randy says it all the time, and it's so true, you can't allow for one and not allow for the other, you know, and that's what it seems like it's happening in this town. You're better off asking, just like I put in the letter, you're better off asking for forgiveness than you are for permission.
We're going to fix that, LJ.
But you go for permission, and they say no, but you do it, and nothing happens. And you, I've been telling my whole life, I see all the things that are going on, and it's just, I know it's not the time for it, but anyway, I appreciate you hearing me.
And, and I'll, I'll follow up as much as I can, but I've got these, these cases I got to take here.
I think our advice is to go to the zoning official and see what steps you need to take. That would probably what I would do first. Meanwhile, Tony will look into the, will look into this also.
I, I see a point that's actually come up in court arguments.
Yeah.
That, you know, there's, there are, there are people in town like you that actually want to do the property.
Doing the right thing, and we're competing with guys that are running businesses out of their properties. You know, it's, I don't know, I don't know if it's a case-by-case thing, I don't know if it's location, if you're in a subdivision, no, if you're on a main road, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but I'm saying something should be done because it's becoming an issue, it really is.
Your point is, your point is we'll take it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to approve CA D. CA 3D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? CA 9, Counselor Hilton.
I just have a question for the solicitor on this one. Since the applicant declined to allow the planning board to extend the time clock for review, how does the time clock work for us, or does it not? Is, in other words, is there a time clock on the public hearing?
If, if, if this goes past on the planning board on it, there has to be an extension here also.
But what I'm saying is that, that the planning board did ask for an extension of the time clock to review this application, which the applicant declined to give them. So the planning board is unable to provide us with an application, or with a recommendation. So my question was, is there a similar time clock for scheduling the public hearing?
There is, yes, by statute.
And that is, do we know?
65 days.
65 days, okay. Thank you.
I entertain a motion to approve CA 9.
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Um, considering I let the public speak last time, yes. Please come to the microphone and introduce yourself. I know who you are, but people may not know.
My name is Mike Shinago, and I live at 35 Duron Road, and my question is, I was at the planning board meeting, and if, if the applicant, because of the not being the president of the town in Tiverton, only had 45 days, or boarding in 45 days to make a decision, and he declines to allow that, and the planning board can't make a decision at that time, why can't something be done with town council to send it back to the planning board with more time to review it, or to make a decision? Because I heard several members of the planning board said, "Well, if you're not going to let us go beyond 45 days, then the answer is no." No motions were filed on that, that's what the conversation was among the group. So I'm just wondering how that works.
Town solicitor?
Yeah, there's actually a wide range of options that the council would have at that time.
Okay.
Including what you just said, so.
So the council can make the decision for it to go back to the planning board?
So long as they make some type of a decision within the time limit, yes.
Who makes some?
Town council. And by the way, there's no, in the Enabling Act, there's no penalties for going out. That's actually the case that was decided here in Tiverton, the New England Development case. Notwithstanding that, I recommend that the time limits be adhered to. It's a council action that needs to be taken.
Which is?
You have a wide range of options, send it back to the planning board.
So, so we have the option this evening to send it back to the planning board?
Is it on for tonight?
It's on the consent agenda.
No, this is just an update.
Well, no, it's actually them coming to us saying there's no recommendation because they weren't allowed.
It's got to be done at the public hearing.
It's got to be done at the public hearing, that's what my question is.
That's correct, yes.
Am I right? Because they said they were not able to make a recommendation to us.
That's correct, yes.
Because they did not have the amount of time they felt was necessary.
Correct, yes.
So.
But it's not something you can do tonight, that, that is something that.
All right, that's what I'm, so.
Action will be taken at the public hearing.
So when we schedule the public hearing, one of our actions could be to send it back to the planning board?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So we have to have the public hearing before the 65 days, is that right?
Correct.
Town council has to?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the one where you need the three weeks, notice in the paper?
For advertiser. The zoning, the zoning amendment, so I, that, all of them, I put date to be determined because I'm going to try to spread them.
Do it in January.
Try not to do all of them at once. Well, it could even be the first meeting of February.
I was just thinking that.
So trying not to put them all on the same day, you're never going to get through all the public hearings.
Right.
No, but the three, but you have to have three weeks, three consecutive weeks in the paper?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about the last times we've been, we've been.
We're trying to have a system to reconfirm.
She's saying that it might not be in the paper if you send it there?
That's what, yeah, because the thing is, it's just like, all right, we can't do it before the, we can't do it before the town, the.
We've been calling to make sure our ads are in the following week.
Okay.
We've been calling, and that's the best we can do.
So could we schedule this the first one, and then if we want?
You want to schedule that one first, sure.
Is that all right with everyone? So we'll do this right away, so.
Just to make sure.
If we wanted to send it back to the planning board?
So I'll probably put two on that day, and one on the other. But I'm going to just fit them into your schedule as I can.
Yeah, and I'll work with you on that, but that's time we do agendas.
Madam President.
Counsel, Counsel Edwards?
Motion to approve CA 9.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
Do I have any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Open public forum announcements, comments, questions, and presentations. Counselor Ryan, final casino subcommittee report to the town council.
Thank you, Madam President. So there's a lot of stuff to go over and not a lot of time, so what I'm thinking I'm going to do is, is all of this available? All of this, this on, on the web or something, for people to see?
It's all on clerk base, everything's been.
Okay, okay, so I just want to go through this. So there were three things that the Tiverton Casino Subcommittee needed to do, they needed to look at the proposals for the casino revenue, we needed to do the host community agreement, and any other issues that came up. So the host community agreement was divided into two parts, and the, the first part was called development, that was approved, conditional approval by the town council on the August 15 meeting. Since then, there has been a glitch on that, which we discussed last time, at one of the, I think it was the last time council meeting. So the, that, and also the, the subcommittee started, continued to work on the host community agreement operations, and also we started looking at some of the casino models, revenue models. So the, that, the host community agreement is further down on the agenda for tonight, so that, the solicitor's going to go over that, and there might even be a change in that from my reading of some of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's not what we're going to, I'm going to present here, I'm just telling you that that's the, the first host community agreement operations that might get worked on tonight. The host community agreement development, that operation, sorry, there is a draft of that, okay? So just to let you know about that. The, the next thing is the models, we came, the subcommittee came up with five models, and again, I have to let you know that this is preliminary, because if you remember, the subcommittee was not, not charged with doing definite models, and this is the way we're going. We were, we were charged with finding out about the host community agreements, we've been, if you think of it as a preliminary work, that's what the, that's what the casino subcommittee was doing. So we've got five models that the casino subcommittee has talked quite a bit about, they are on the clerk base, I guess. I, they are all drafts, you've got to keep remembering this, and what I did is, I put the models that I had heard about and talked to people about, and I put it in a similar kind of diagram, not because that's what they gave me, but because I tried to get it so that people could understand it, and you could have, it would be easier to compare one model to another. So again, this is basically, the casino subcommittee came up with this so that we could start the conversations. And we also looked at this, this was all agreed to by the casino subcommittee. One of the things I, we put together is the commonalities of the five different models. They all had a target for capital improvements. Definitions of capital improvements varied, so there's got to be work on that. Most models provided short and long-term tax relief, all models made use of restricted accounts, and the other thing, not surprisingly, the suggested categories for the revenues did vary. So that's about all we could do, is just say, okay, these are the models that we heard. By no means is this is all the models. It's kind of like to get people thinking about what's in these models, what's good about them, what's missing, what's bad about them. It's really to start the conversation on a, on a more public, wider level, so keep that in mind. So there's a list of recommendations, there were 11 of them. I think I can go through them very quickly, but the first one is really important, I think. There needs to be a needs assessment for the town as a whole. It's, it's, it's difficult to figure out what the percentages should be, and what the category should be, if we don't have a needs assessment for the town. Now, we started that by doing, the department heads have come up with five-year plans, and that's fine for as, as far as it goes, because the department heads are saying, okay, these are the things that we need. But I think we need a town assessment. We need, what does a town need, not necessarily what does the department heads need. And hopefully, there's going to be some, a lot of agreement, but there's got to be some discussion about that because it's not one-to-one. So that's, that's one of the recommendations, that we get a needs assessment. Another one that came through from many different people is, it is not recommended to use the casino revenue for operations, meaning payroll and/or benefits. The reasoning behind that is that the casino revenue is considered volatile. So we really, we've got guarantees that it's going to be at least $3 million up until 2030, but on the other hand, you just, you just have to be careful about guarantees. Let's see, other, other models, other suggestions that came from the casino and also other people that we've talked to, is possibility of having a cap on the, on the capital fund, which capital fund, that was one of the categories that everybody had, had put in, in the models. Alternately, you can have a cap, a cap for that, or you could also have, you could restrict the number of years of money would go into the capital fund. You can do it different ways. And again, you got to, I think if you keep thinking of options and try to keep an open mind, you'll start seeing what some of the problems with some of these things are, and also what are the good points. So that's really what I'm hoping for. For the debt suggestion, debt service, there's to reduce short and long-term tax revenue, one of the targets is debt service. But I think when I talk to people, there was not a lot of specific ideas of how to reduce that debt service, because some of them, I think the treasurer had already pointed out, some of them you can't touch that debt service because you're going to get penalized for trying to do it. So, but that doesn't mean that you can't do it with other things, we just need to, we need to get some more suggestions on that. Hierarchy of plans, look at the short and term, long-term goals that the council, that the town already has. Use the comprehensive town plan, town council goals, school committee facilities evaluation plan. The other thing, ask for opinions on what the money should not be used for, because some people have very strong opinions on that, and that actually also is, that's a useful discussion as well. Let's see. The other question, the other suggestions were to generate specific questions for solicitor, the treasurer, and the tax assessor, what we should and should not be doing. The, there was also a question about whether this should be in a charter revision or an ordinance, those are two options. The solicitor strongly recommended that we use a charter revision with specific percentages, correct me if I'm wrong, including in the revision, and then we put the vote, we put that, that to the voters for a decision. Okay? You're okay with that?
Do we have a question on that?
There's, there's two ways to go about this, charter and ordinance.
Yes.
Charter is, is, is one of the ways it goes, because you already have provisions in the charter for this, so you might want to take a look at that, and I think that's something that needs to be reviewed.
Revisions in the charter for the revenue?
Yes.
For the gaming, casino revenue?
No.
No.
No. And this in?
In the charter revision that's existing.
No. The charter commission is working on certain things, but it's not on.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, no, it's not in the charter now.
Right.
The question I have, so is it the opinion of the solicitor that we should put this in the charter, or is it the opinion of the solicitor that these are your two options?
You have two options.
Okay. But I just want to be clear, that it's, so you're not standing, sitting here telling us that it's your opinion that we should put language for governing the revenue from the, from the gaming share specifically in the charter, you're not favoring one versus the other, it's up to the council to decide?
It's, it's, it's up to you all, but I'm going to tell you right now, one thing, though, is typically these, you know, revenue provisions are in your charter. I can tell you that in Lincoln, it's, it's mostly ordinance, that's what I've been telling you, but you got to take a look at that, too.
So, but, so I just want to be very clear, because I know it was in the Daily News that you said that, that this provision should go in the charter, but you did not, you didn't say specifically that it's your opinion that this should go in the charter.
I, I.
Actually, I thought you did, no?
Yeah, here's the thing, and I, I want to be careful.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Because that's not my job, all right?
What's not your job?
My job isn't to tell you what the policy is.
No, correct.
I can tell you that, you know, and I think what I said at the meeting, was that these, these types of provisions are typically in a, in a charter.
Right.
Because that's where your budget provisions are now. So that's what I said, all right?
Okay.
But I want to make sure that, and this is the distinction, I hope you don't think I'm parsing things too much, there's not a legal requirement that it go in the charter, okay?
Right.
Does everybody understand that?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that.
But whose decision is that to make would be the town council?
Well, actually, you know, if you decide it's going to go in the charter, then that's something that the voters decide.
It's the voters.
But that's not what I'm saying, whose decision? Is it to make it an ordinance or go into the charter?
That, that's a policy consideration.
It's a policy consideration, that's what I meant to say.
And to answer your question, I'm not, not telling you what to do on, on your policy, that's something for you to decide.
Again, I'm just asking, because it, the way it was written in the paper following the last meeting, it sounded like that's what was being said.
Well. Well.
And I just wanted to make sure that, that, that's very clear.
Okay, but, but councillor, uh, councillor Edwards, I think that was my understanding that, but I also thought it was because, so if, if it came, I think it came from me because my understanding was that the charter will trump the ordinance.
Uh, if there's a charter provision, that, that controls over an ordinance provision.
Right, so, and I guess, so that's the reason, John, that we would say, okay, so if you have an, you can do it as an ordinance, but if it's, becomes a charter revision, the charter trump, trumps it.
Yes.
So I think that's, is that the distinction, is that fair?
You can't have an ordinance, uh, a provision that is in, in conflict with or violates a charter provision.
Right, so that would mean that, so the charter would prevail?
Yes.
Yeah.
My, my purpose of this discussion is just strictly to set the record straight.
Yeah.
Versus what was printed in the paper versus what actually occurred, because I don't, I don't want people to get the opinion that our solicitor is telling us that we need to put this in the charter.
No, 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 I thought you were advising, because I, or maybe it could have been from a direct question, what trumps what?
That's, that's actually correct.
Okay, okay. Is that, is that clear?
This is, this is the solicitor recommends.
Yeah.
Charter revision. So that isn't true, you don't recommend that.
I, I don't make recommendations at all on, on that thing. If it were, if there were a requirement in, in the law that this go in the charter, I would tell you that, there is none. And, you know, in, in Lincoln, uh, one of the main things that was discussed, it was, it's in, in ordinance form.
Right.
However, Councilman Ryan's correct, there was a discussion on that, and, you know, if you have a charter provision, that controls over everything else.
But knowing, knowing what we know about charters now with this town charter changing however often, how tough it is to change, having this brand-new revenue coming in, an ordinance would make much more sense because it's easier to change an ordinance than it is to change the charter. So we get this money and we screw up and, and we need to change it, it's a lot easier to fix an ordinance than it is to fix the charter.
That, that actually goes to what, what happened, I think why the, the, where the quote came from. Uh, what I had said was, that's one of the arguments in favor of having this in the charter, the fact that, you know, you, you, you have a, um, stable, uh, provision for where the revenue goes because the charter is so much difficult to change than an ordinance. That's one of the arguments in favor of having these type of provisions in a charter.
And it's also voted by the people.
Exactly, and the people also vote on it, too, so. I think that's where the, um, um, quote comes from. And it's something to consider. I'm just not telling you what to do.
Wow.
Are we good? Are we good? Are we good with that now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, it was that recommended to extend an invitation to the Lincoln town manager in a public forum so he can explain what they did in Lincoln, um, how they allocated the revenue and the results realized over the past several years. That was just a, um, a recommendation. And then the other one was to, in a, appoint an advisory board that could focus on specific tasks, providing a short and long-term expenditure suggestions, getting the estimated cost of the suggestions, getting the feedbacks on some of the models that were, are proposed, and I'm assuming that more models will be coming in, um, or suggested. And I, the other thing I realized, it would also make it, um, it would be, if there was an advisory board, it would also be, uh, that shows, there'd be some continuity because the town administrator, we already know, is not gonna be the same one next year. Town council may or may not be the same one next year, probably not, but it, there would be some continuity, so those were the reasons for doing a casino revenue advisory board, acronym is CRAB.
I like the name of that.
I, yeah, well, it was either crab or crack, and I thought, all right, we went with crab, it can be crabby. Uh, and then the last thing, the last thing was, um, so, so the models are different from the advisory board. The advisory board, it was just suggested that we get some people in town who are, um, they can analyze the needs of the town, we can do a needs assessment for, of the town, not of the department heads. Um, they, we need to cost out the estimated expenses of what these capital needs would be because so far, we don't have any. And, and I think that if we get some people in town, by the way, this, this plan was based on, uh, the facilities management plan that, no, it's not management, facilities.
Maintenance.
Hmm?
Is it maintenance plan?
Nope. Facilities something plan. That was given to people in the town and they were supposed to come up with, they were looking at all the properties in Tiverton and they were making suggestions about what we should do with the properties. And that, again, it's strictly advisory, but it gives it to the other people and say, okay, you find out what the assessments are, you find out the appropriate priorities, find out, um, how much it costs, and come back and, and give us a list of suggestions. Again, it's just like the subcommittee, it was suggestions only because you can look at them all and say, nope, don't wanna do it, but at least you've got something to work with. So that was another, that was a suggestion for the, um, from the casino subcommittee. And, um, I also included a list of the capital improvement definitions, this is coming from, um, uh, town code ordinances because it's right there, it lists the capital improvements. And, um, so it was something that people could work with, something people could look at. And finally, it was a memo from, um, the treasurer of the town to the administrator talking a little bit about the debt services and what you can and cannot do with certain bonds. So that was another reason why it came to the fore that we gotta get some more definitions on debt service. So, um, with that, we decided that what we could do with the subcommittee is, um, uh, stu-, you know, uh, close the subcommittee. We, we had our last meeting November 29th, then we need to bump this up to the town council so we can get more ideas about the models, more discussion of what's going on, more discussion about whether we wanna have this short-term advisory committee or not. And, um, we definitely need discussion and feedback from the town council on, uh, specific, um, provisions in the host community agreement. The first one, the development to fix the, um, uh, I think the, I think it's on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
To fix the permitting fees. And the second one, because the town, the subcommittee didn't feel that we could, it was like hours of operations and licensing and, uh, what was the other one? There was one more.
Hours of operations, licensing. Legal license, but you said licensing.
Legal license, yeah, oh, yeah. So it was like it's something that has to come up to the, uh, town council, so instead of having a discussion as a subcommittee, we just thought, let's just bring it up here. So I think that we have done what we were supposed to do. So that is the end.
Thank you, and it shows a lot of hard work, and I wanna thank all the committee for their diligence in going through this far as, um, like you did say, it is on the agenda 10 and 11, um, by the town solicitors, so we'll have further discussion and possible action if we need to take it. Is that correct, Tony?
That's correct.
Mr. President.
Any questions? Yes.
Uh, question for the solicitor. I don't see a sunset clause in the resolution that establishes committee. Do we need a second resolution to dissolve the committee?
There isn't a sunset clause.
There is no sunset clause, so there wouldn't need to be a resolution to dissolve if everything is done.
Yeah, I think the only thing, you had mentioned about the minutes of the meeting, and you seemed to think that we could just, we could have the minutes for the last meeting, and that was the only thing, do we have to come back to approve the minutes? And I thought you had said because it's a subcommittee, we could just send it out to the members of the committee?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so that would, so we didn't, we wouldn't need to do that? We wouldn't need to have, okay?
So, so the committee just goes away because the work is complete?
The work is complete, so they're not, they're not gonna do anything else, but if you wanna formally discharge them, you can.
But we should do the minutes, but we can't.
That's correct.
Yeah, so not tonight, John, because we have to do the minutes first?
Yeah, I wanna make sure that we're doing this correctly.
Yeah.
And then the other, the other question I had, just, I guess, a generic question because there's obviously, there's a lot of different options that were presented.
Yeah.
Is there a specific revenue model that the subcommittee favored or had recommendations on? And the reason I ask is because in the resolution, it says that the subcommittee will continue diligence through the development process of the casino, including but not limited to developing a plan for the allocation of the gaming revenue from the casino. And so I, I just wanna make sure that we're not, if I read that literally, it seems to me like you guys would come up with a specific plan to present to us, and it seems like there's a lot of different options and, and there's still more work to be done on this.
Yeah, I think that's, the reason for that is because, um, there was a lot of resistance from, I think, in town council, and I think when we had discussions on it, not to do, not to make one recommendation to the town council. I think people were nervous about that. And so I thought, okay, we, this, we, this is one way, we can, we can do our work, we can put these ideas down, and then it's still left for the town council to decide, because I see, I see these models as more, looking through them, you know, thinking about them because after we did the models, I talked to different people and I would say, well, did you think about this? Somebody else mentioned that, and he said, I didn't even think about that. So this is more to get, and that's another reason why, we talked about it in the subcommittee and we specifically said, no, let's not do, let's not do a model.
Okay.
Okay? And we don't, that's why, and we also didn't have a needs assessment either, so that makes it difficult, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sustainable Secconnet and Clean Ocean Access, presentation and proposal for a single-use plastic bag ban in Tiverton, letters of support from Tiverton Open Space, Land Preservation Commission, and Environmental Council of Rhode Island. Uh, I think, Bill, yeah?
All right, so I have to move. I'm gonna shine that right in my tray.
Thank you.
Let me use my single bag for my trash.
So while this is warming up, uh, I'll just do some introductions, I know time is of the essence this evening, so thank you, council, for having us up to talk about this important and hopefully less contentious, uh, matter than casino revenue. Michael Gerlach, I'm with, uh, 506 King Road here in Tiverton, I co-facilitate, uh, an environmental group here in town known as Sustainable Secconnet. I'm joined by Dave McLaughlin, uh, from Clean Ocean Access, he is the executive director there and has been extremely helpful supporting Sustainable Secconnet as we move to advance what hopefully is a single-use, uh, plastic bag ban here in ordinance following suit of many of our East Bay sister communities here. Just a, uh, housekeeping note, many of the photos that you're gonna see as part of this presentation were taken last Saturday, um, at our campaign kickoff at Fogland Beach. We had over 20 people join us for nearly two hours. We removed 20 bags of trash from Fogland Beach, uh, much in the way of plastic, glass, and all sorts of stuff. But, um, the problem is real, um, and these pictures are certainly proof positive of that. So let's jump right in and talk about, um, the problem that we are facing, not only here in Tiverton, but if you follow the news at all, it's a regional, national, international problem that is plastic. Um, if you've seen the pictures of the gyres in the Pacific, the Atlantic, you see just how much plastic pollution is making its way into our everyday life. Uh, that plastic pollution inevitably breaks down, enters, um, you know, potentially the food, um, stream for humans, but in essence, American use, Americans use over 100 billion single-use plastic bags per year. The average use time for a single bag is 12 minutes. And so while recycling efforts exist, they're not really effective, resulting in a lot of waste that enters our waste stream, our waterways, and our landscapes. Clean Ocean Access has been a leader, um, in this space for the last several years, um, and since, uh, 2013, um, the local beach cleanups that they have led have removed nearly 14,000 bags, um, that have littered our waterways since that time. So the good news is, is that nationwide municipalities are leading the way in, um, changing, um, policy here in enacting single-use plastic bag bans. Here in Rhode Island, um, currently four municipalities have already passed ban ordinances, those being Barrington, Newport, Middletown, and Jamestown, Portsmouth is in discussion. Um, and so here, the proposal for Tiverton is simply to, um, take advantage of the momentum that's growing in the state, harness the support that we have for protecting our pristine coastline, our waterways, our natural habitats, and really drive, um, a single-use plastic bag ban here in town. So just a couple of numbers to really help crystallize the environmental crisis that's behind us, really only gonna focus on a couple of these here, but starting at our top right here, again, to reiterate the data from Clean Ocean Access here, 200 cleanups removing, uh, nearly 12,000 bags representing 6.4% of the waste stream. Clean Ocean Access, don't wanna speak for Dave here, but does an amazing job cataloging every single piece of trash that is pulled there. Um, we've already talked about the 100 billion bags that Americans are using, we've already talked about, um, the 12-minute average lifespan. It's also important to note that that's gonna take a thousand years to break down in a landfill, um, and that's pretty sad. To put it really in the perspective, National Geographic is reporting that there are over five trillion, with a T, pieces of trash in the ocean, most of that made up by plastic. So, you know, think globally, act locally, and here we are. So again, just to really reiterate the municipal leadership here, nationwide, over 100 communities have passed single-use plastic bag bans. In Massachusetts, our neighbor to the north, 60 communities have enacted bans, most recently Boston in the last couple of weeks. Uh, we've already talked about the five local communities here, um, that have taken action. It's important to note that in most cases, there has been, uh, large and wide community support and near unanimous support at the council level here. So the benefits for Tiverton should be self-explanatory, but, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it. So clean waterways and coastlines. Here in the town that we all know and love, we have over 10 miles of coastline, really thriving ocean-based, uh, economy and a recreational scene, uh, we have a municipal reservoir that needs continued protection, so we can't afford not to take these additional steps to protect these natural assets. We have a huge amount of open space. Um, by taking these steps, we can protect wildlife safety, whether that's marine life or wildlife that oftentimes, and that we see the horrendous pictures, um, in the news about wildlife, uh, and marine life accidentally ingesting this type of plastic, thinking it's food, is causing sickness and ultimately death. Again, many times, uh, if we're talking about the oceans, these small bits of plastic make it, you know, fish that humans then eat, you know, whatever's going into the fish is ultimately making its way into our bodies' way. Beautification, um, just picked another trash bag off the street today, right across the street from me. Uh, we all want less trash to block our roadways, our woods, our public spaces, um, you know, there's a very active litter committee in town, um, I've been in contact with them, they're very supportive of this. Um, we have tons of open space, tons of conservation space, um, we need to be doing a better job, um, avoiding that trash. And frankly, there's an altruistic sense of satisfaction here to be, potentially be in the lead, um, with the state, um, and the nation with some common sense legislation that helps, uh, combat this crisis at the local level. So, what would a single-use plastic bag ban in ordinance look like? So just wanna reiterate that the letter of support that came from Clean Ocean Access contains a copy of draft, a draft, um, ordinance to lighten the lift, if you will, if the council were to so choose to, um, take a, a next step with this. The language that has been provided is largely in use in those other communities that have passed it. Um, so what would the ordinance cover? So we're really focused here on single-use plastic carryout bags, so these are typically the ones that we get at the grocery stores, the pharmacies, so on and so forth there. It would also cover requirements for business establishments to, um, provide for plastic bag recycling, many have those containers. Um, we would look to make sure that everyone has plastic bag recycling. Uh, it's important to note that plastic bags cannot go into the regular recycling stream because when it's processed, it grinds up the gears, it needs to be recycled separately. Um, we would propose that there would be requirements for business establishments to make reusable bags available for sale, and there would be penalties for non-compliance. It's also important to note what would be exempt, uh, from the ordinance here. So what would not be in the ordinance, oh, excuse me, ordinance would be plastic barrier bags. So these are the ones that you wrap your meat from the deli in, that you put your vegetables in, we're not talking about banning those. We're not talking about banning the dry cleaning bags, so these are known as double-open bags. Uh, we're not talking about banning bags that are larger than 20 We're not talking about banning bags that are larger than 28 by 36 inches. If you're buying something large, we want to make sure you can get it home. And we're also not talking about bags that are greater than 4 millimeters in thickness because of the reusability nature of those. So public support for a growing, is growing for a bag ban. So again, just to reiterate, I know many of you have the letters. We have more letters on the way. So Clean Ocean Access is supporting Environmental Council of Rhode Island, Sailors for the Sea, which is another nonprofit based on the island that advocates for clean waterways, Tiverton Open Space Commission. I had the pleasure of participating in the Tiverton Harbor Commission meeting last Monday. They unanimously supported and will be sending a letter as well. And so we've also been doing, with the help of Clean Ocean Access, a public opinion survey. So as of last week, the second, we had 37 separate residents who have signed the petition to ban single-use plastic bags. We actually have some folks in the audience here who participated in our, our beach cleanup and campaign kickoff last week. Maybe a little show of hands? Yep, great. So we're out in force here this evening. So in any case, and in the appendix, you do have information on those 37 residents that signed in support here. So the next slide just concludes the presentation and certainly opened it up for questions here. But we'd really like to see some positive action by the council to take some next steps in this space. Again, Clean Ocean Access has provided draft legislative language to lighten the lift here, to make it easier to take a next step. We strongly advocate seeking additional public and local business input in the, in the form of surveys or public meetings. It's really important, and we wholeheartedly support having key stakeholders come out and talk about this. And frankly, we'd like to see advancement of, you know, ultimately advance a vote on a final ordinance. Sustainable Secconnet and Clean Ocean Access remains committed to helping the council and supporting them moving forward. And before I open it up for questions, Dave, any color commentary?
No, I would just say, thank you for having us here tonight, and I think that Bill did an excellent job to explain the situation, the proposal at hand, and I personally look forward to working with everyone on moving forward.
Great. So happy to answer any questions, if there are.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President.
Counselor Edwards?
I have several, if you'll indulge me. So first things first, Sustainable Secconnet, how long have you guys been around as an organization?
So we're not, I wouldn't go as far as calling us a formal organization. We are a gathering of like-minded individuals from Tiverton and Little Compton.
How long have you guys been gathering? A couple of years?
Yeah.
And then you mentioned in the, in the presentation, it looks like 60% of the communities, the 100 communities that are doing this today are in Massachusetts, the other 5% are in Rhode Island. Where are the rest?
Happy to get that information for you, but I believe San Francisco has also enacted a ban, off the top of your head?
Yeah, the entire state of California passed a resolution, Proposition 67, in their last election in November. The state of Hawaii also has a resolution on plastic bags.
Okay.
But we could get into the whole list, but there are states, counties, municipalities.
Okay. And then the Newport ordinance, that was the first one that came up, right?
Correct.
What year was that?
Well, actually Barrington was the first.
Barrington was the first, 2013, it went live. Newport passed on March 8th. That was the second final reading with an implementation date of November 1st.
Of this year?
Of this year. So it allowed for a period of voluntary compliance, as far as the businesses, to figure out a strategy.
Gotcha. All right, so that eliminates the second part of that question, which is, what impact have you seen on First Beach with the beach cleanups? But we'll talk about that later.
Yep.
And then, you know, finally, I guess it's more of a statement, but as I look through the, the draft ordinance, there is, there is so much stuff that's exempted. It really, I just kind of tried to think about essentially who this would target in our community, since Tiverton has been known as being relatively anti-business for quite some time.
Amen.
And it looks like we're, we're going to impact restaurants, supermarkets, convenience stores, and, you know, I think about some of the businesses that have been here for a long time that would make use of single-use plastic bags, one of which, Bridgeport Seafood, they've been around for 80 years as of this year. And if we're going to do something that's going to negatively impact the local business, I mean, I just, I don't see any way that I could possibly support that, especially going after somebody who's going to be, who's been in business three generations.
Sure. So my response to that is that we're certainly not looking to impact businesses negatively, but in large cases, there are viable alternatives here that, with a little bit of work and effort, we can also come to.
Okay. And, oh, sorry, one other question, if the council will allow it. So you mentioned the state of California, state of Hawaii have done this. How come we're not talking to the state of Rhode Island? Why are we here talking to Tiverton?
I can take that question. When we looked at the topic of how to move forward with environmental sustainability, we took the approach that it really should start at a local level. And really to demonstrate that the topic of environmental sustainability and stewardship is really something that has a broader topic. It's not just about the bag, it's about reducing all single-use materials that are impacting the local environment. So we took the approach of trying to demonstrate that Equinix Island and Newport County can move forward with a ban. Senator Josh Miller from Cranston has introduced a bag ordinance in prior years, and we look forward to working with him and fellow members of the General Assembly to move forward with the statewide ordinance. What we really want to show at a local level, with the different diversities in each community, is that it is viable, it doesn't have the negative impact on business, it actually brings the community together. So that's, that's the answer, we're starting local and then go to a statewide level.
Just to add on to that, I would wholeheartedly support the council networking with your colleagues at other municipalities to talk about how the discussions went with the concerns that you're raising, Councilor Edwards. Certainly municipalities as Newport, Middletown, Barrington, very big retail, especially at the mom and pop level, so I have to imagine that there were constructive conversations there and thoughtful solutions to address those concerns.
Well, if I'm, just as a follow-up to that, if I'm perfectly honest, because I do, I lived down in Newport for seven years. I know a lot of people down there. In fact, I mean, I know Dave's father from when he was running for the town, for the city council down there. And I have a lot of friends that still work in the restaurant business down there. I think if you were to talk to anybody who works in the restaurant industry today, at least the people that I know, and you asked them how the plastic bag ordinance has impacted their business, they would look at you with three heads and say, what are you talking about? So I'm not necessarily sure, just knowing the people that I know who still work in one of the industries that would be impacted by the elimination of single-use plastic bags, if they even have any clue that this happened in the first place.
I would like to say that Tiverton, we should take that on a case-by-case basis, and let's have the conversation in Tiverton and not worry about what Newport is doing or not doing. Let's learn from that, but at least let's have the conversation at the local level here in Tiverton.
Madam President.
Counselor Bob.
I have a commercial business in town. I don't use, I read the things, I brought these, these are the single-use bags you guys are talking about. I use the heavy bags. Now, these will not be banned.
Is it, is it more than 4 millimeter?
This is 4-millimeter bag.
There you go.
It won't be banned, it's usable, but now this is going to be thrown in. This is going to go in your water and your pond instead of this one, so you're getting three times as much plastic out there. So I think we're going to create a bigger problem by going with a, I have to use heavy bags, my product I sell is heavy, so it may create a bigger problem than these little smaller ones, you know, so. Although this will use 10 times, well, you can use this one twice, but I think, just got to give it some thought, let the business owners decide if they want, I have to pay for the bigger bags, but do these guys want to spend the extra money or not?
Counselor, I think it's a valid point, and I think a point to consider is, the spirit of the ordinance needs to be a community-based activity where the community actually wants to move forward with the concept of durable, reusable materials. So there's an equal responsibility on, on the residents and citizens to be responsible to bring a reusable bag. So the idea is that there's less burden put on the business for even providing bags, so that you wouldn't actually have to have as many in stock or the carrying costs, and that customers would be bringing their own bags to the store. I can attest in the local communities on Equinix Island that, that, that change is starting to happen. It's, it definitely isn't a switch, but it is moving in that direction. So for the short time you could see an increase in those thicker bags, you could see an increase in paper bag use, but over the long term, the spirit of the ordinance is to move towards durable, reusable materials.
And not to be the Tiverton bags that we throw our trash in, so them are only 2-mill. So they're going to be banned?
No, 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 we're, yeah.
Well, I mean, if you can, I mean, that's.
Well, I think that's part of the writing process, is that we're obviously not going to ban our.
Trash bags.
As you throw bags. I think that's a little.
Well, that, if you're going to write an order, you have to put that in there. You're going to have to say.
Well, obviously, and that's what we would want to have the conversation about.
It would be the bags at the point of sale at retail.
Counselor Hilton?
So as, before I was on the council, a longtime member of the Conservation Commission, and somebody who's picked up a lot of plastic bags and a lot of garbage off of Fogland and Grinnell's and other conservation areas in town, I think that this is a good idea. But I also think that the best way to get people to buy into this is what you're doing is to start at the grassroots, and I think that starting at the grassroots includes starting with the merchants. So my suggestion might be to reach out to not only the litter committee, which I know you have, and the, and the Harbor Commission, which is great, but I would also talk to the Conservation Commission, because this idea's been bounced around for years at the Conservation Commission. But I'd also go and talk to the EDC, because I find that when you can have a discussion with a group that might be affected by an ordinance change before they see the draft ordinance, it usually goes a lot better than here comes a draft ordinance that's going to change our, our business. And, you know, there may be opportunities, sometimes there are small grants that are out there that are available, there may be one of these commissions that, you know, could apply for something to sort of, as a seed, to get people their first, you know, reusable bag. Some of us, I happen to shop at a market where they sell them, so now I have a supply of my own reusable garbage bags. I do know it can work. I've been in communities where literally nobody goes to a store without their own bag. They keep one in their car, they keep a few in their car, and when they go in and shop, they get their reusable bag filled back up, and that's it. And the stores don't even have bags anymore. Like, if you're one of the few people that goes in without a bag, they have to find one for you. It takes a long time, but I think it's doable. But I really do think that, you know, if you were to reach out to some of those committees, especially the EDC, and, and get the merchants' input, I think, you know, a lot of the people who own small businesses here, obviously, you know, they're working on thin margins, but I think a lot of them also really love the town and care about the town, and many of them live here. Many of the small business owners live in Tiverton, and they see the same trash and the same garbage. So, you know, they might have an idea, and, and as I said, I'd be very interested in, I'd even volunteer to help somebody if they wanted to try and find some small grant money to try and seed this program. The other thing that I would recommend in terms of a long-term cultural change, and it's one of the things that the Conservation Commission did for forever with the fourth and fifth graders, was to bring the model of how wastewater works when you have wells and groundwater. And it was a regular educational program at the school, and I think one of the places to start really is with kids and reusable bags. And it's remarkable, as a parent myself, although my children are older, that when your children understand there's something that you can do for the environment, they're some of the best police there is, because the minute you don't, they point it out to you. So maybe even in, you know, an educational program or something at the schools, if they're amenable, would be helpful.
Sure.
Those are my suggestions, but long-term, I think it's a great idea. If I didn't have to pick up another plastic bag at Grinnell's or Fogland again, I'd be pleased as punch.
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes.
One more, sorry. Just something else I would think about as well is, because you've mentioned now Grinnell's and Fogland a couple of times, and I wonder what amount of trash is a result of, you know, coming up through our waterways and washing ashore versus what is something that's just left on the beach because the town of Tiverton declined to put, you know, receptacles on the beach to accept that waste?
Fair point. I think it's probably a mix at the end of the day.
Yeah.
And I'll say it's not for lack of trying, for trying to get containers at Grinnell's and Fogland.
Well, there are containers at Grinnell's.
At Grinnell's, but not Fogland.
Not at Fogland.
And it's not for lack of trying, let me tell you that.
No, and when Bill was on the council.
I tried.
Him and Brett Pelletier really tried to do that.
Yeah. But, I mean, the problem, and I appreciate Counselor Edwards' point, but there are plenty of other places in Tiverton that are covered with plastic bags, too. I mean, the beaches happen to be, you know, some of the worst abuse, but you can go to lots of places and find plastic bags in trees and bushes and.
I run the roads, I wipe the roads on a regular basis. When you take that, when you slow the pace down and you're not driving in a vehicle, you see how systemic the problem is and how just deep the problem is. It's everywhere. It's absolutely everywhere. Fair.
Anyone else? Bill, I would like to get the businesses a little involved, and if they get enthusiastic, it may work out a little better, but if someone works with them and tells them different solutions and how this might not be as costly as at first, they're going to be like, ugh, like, what is this going to mean to us? So if you worked with the businesses and kind of explained this to them and showed them the different alternatives, it would probably be easier to get this through.
Fair.
Madam? Madam President?
Yes.
Just one comment.
Counselor.
Certainly, I gather up my plastic bags, single-use bags, and I bring them to a place to dispose of them. That happens to be in Massachusetts.
Yeah, it does.
If there was someplace local, it probably would be more convenient.
Like, maybe if Tom's Market had something or, because that's Stop &amp; Shop, right? Yeah.
You don't see places to deposit them very often, and maybe it requires to stay, be in at the DPW, where you could just, or at the town farm, at the town dump.
The dump.
Where you can put in a single-use as a, as a stopgap measure.
That's actually, I think, a really, I mean, that's a really good starter idea that, I mean, I don't think anybody would be opposed to that anywhere, and if we could find a way to do it, at least that's a start while you try and get the business community and everybody else on board.
Even somewhere like CBS or Rite Aid may be up to doing that also.
Absolutely.
I'll help, working with Bill, to take an inventory of the stores. You do have the signage up in the back of the room for the restore program, so all large facilities should be providing containers to recycle all types of, what I'll just refer to as stretchy plastic. So all of those bags that you've seen that are exempt, that Bill mentioned, they would still be recycled through the restore program. This ordinance would just be addressing that single-use bag that's provided at checkout. But those, those containers should exist at your larger retail establishments.
Any other questions?
One more. Would a recycle program work better than a ban?
Historically, the recycling rates, or should I say the collection of the materials, are extremely low. The conversation we're just having about the restore program is the program to recycle plastic bags. The amount that comes back is anywhere between 5 and 10%. Have to probably do more quantitative analysis to get you a number specifically for Tiverton. The challenge there is that the plastic bags really aren't recyclable, they're really downcyclable. They're perhaps made into Trex tiling for porches, or they're made into playground and swing sets, but once those materials are broken and reach their end of life, they just become waste. So the material can be downcycled once or twice, but even still, the recycling rates are very poor, the material has low value. We've noticed in Newport recently and Middletown that the amount of paper bags recycling are actually increasing because people know how to recycle paper. So it's one of those behavior changes, but unfortunately, that low-value. So it's one of those behavior changes, but unfortunately, that low-value, single-use plastic bags seem to get carried away in the wind or enter the bay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can we put the curtain up with your holiday wreath?
Yes. Our Christmas... Oh, my God.
Counselor, you want to hit the button?
Counselor, Bill wants to show our wreath.
I would like our Christmas wreath to be shown.
All right, you can just hit it, and then I'll just...
There we go. We have a holiday wreath outside in a menorah.
I'll be outside.
In a prayer rug.
Anything else outside?
I don't want to offend anyone.
I'll continue. Appointments and resignations. Shh, shh, shh. Thank you. Appointments and resignations, Tiverton Library Board of Trustees, resignation of Barbara R. Donnelly. I entertain a motion to accept Barbara's resignation with regret and thank her for her endless support of the library and endless work that she's put into this community over several years.
It's all moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
May I just, I...
Of course.
You know, it's always, we're always appreciative when people have served on boards and commissions for a particularly long time, but I have to admit, even I was not aware how long Mrs. Donnelly has actually served.
I was in high school.
Yeah.
Okay, just to know.
July of 1977. So I would just like to point out that that is exceptional service and that we should be very, very, we're appreciative of all the volunteers, but that really is an amazing record. And I'd just like to express my appreciation.
Anyone else? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Resignation, Nancy Rogers, Personnel Board, I entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to accept with regret Nancy Rogers' resignation from the Personnel Board and thank her for her many years of service.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Recreation Committee, John Cudero, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to accept John Cudero's resignation from the Recreation Committee and thank him for his service, specifically because he was the chair as well, so he did a lot for the community.
One second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Planning Board, Brett Pelletier, I entertain a motion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to accept Brett Pelletier's resignation from the Planning Board and thank him for his service, not just on the council, but also for the short period of time where he helped us out with the vacancy on the Planning Board. I think he stayed a little bit longer than even he anticipated, so thank you, Brett.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Municipal Court Judge James Donnelly, obviously, the Donnellys are retiring and hopefully going to have a good time. Do I entertain a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to accept with regret James Donnelly's resignation from the municipal court and thank him for his many years of service.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Do you want me to...
Advertise for all these positions?
Yeah. The municipal judge position as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, there is something in front of the municipal court judge now. By accepting his resignation, does he complete what he's doing?
He said he would stay on until you have the replacement because we still have municipal court...
Right.
...to continue his steps.
Okay.
He will stay on through this charter complaint and to continue as long as it doesn't go past January.
That's only a couple of weeks, so we'll hope for the best.
That's fine. He continues until the replacement.
Yes.
Unfinished business, DPW Director William Anderson, update on Grinnell's Beach bids.
Madam President, I'd like to request the council to continue this. Bill hasn't had a chance to brief the Recreation, or the Grinnell's Beach Committee on this, so you can continue this to a future date.
Okay, so I'd like a motion to continue this to a future date.
Madam President, motion to continue this to a future date.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Just let somebody, let me or Nancy, know if the Grinnell's Beach Committee has reviewed this and wants it on the agenda. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Town Administrator, request of $2,369.84 from council contingency for payment of boarding of building.
Thank you, Madam President. Last August, I believe, there was a fire on Chase Street. The house was pretty much told, gutted, we had to board, however, there is no money in the budget for boarding. We tried to search for insurance company, mortgage companies and so forth to try to pay for this. No one is coming forward. We will put a lien on the property. I've talked with the solicitor about that so that at some point, the property will at least sell and we'll get our money back. But request $23,698.4 from the contingency fund.
Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
Can we take this, instead of taking it from the council contingency, can we take it from the Building Department?
Well, that's what I was just looking at. Is there anything from the building and zoning?
I just gave them $500 for a building permit. I know they got that.
You gave them five... Oh.
Doesn't count.
Yeah, that doesn't count. Is there anything from Neil's account that can be taken at this point?
I don't have the budget in front of me at this moment, but I know when we looked at this several months ago, seeing if there's a place to transfer it, salaries are budgeted tightly, he has no sort of really discretionary funds in his budget. I can take another look at it, but...
Well, we're halfway through the year, and he still has almost $1,800 in his supplies and miscellaneous. He's only spent $200.
Madam President, I didn't mean to take it directly from him. I meant from the funds that he brings in.
Oh, no, you can't do that.
Why not?
Because that goes... Because that's revenue that goes into the general fund, am I correct? Okay.
Well, can't they take it out of the general fund?
That has to be a vote of the town, right, to take anything out of the general fund?
We need to fix that.
Well, we won't be doing that this evening, so we have to think of a solution. Any further discussion? I mean, we could take from council contingency, but keep in mind that we've been taking a lot from there.
If we do take it from the council contingency, when we do get paid, will it go back into there? Or will it go into the general fund?
It could mean, I imagine even if we're paid this year, which I doubt that will happen, it'll go into the general fund.
Now, council contingency does have $33,000 in it.
We've got a lot of snow coming.
We do.
Madam President?
Counselor Hilton?
I did take a look at that budget, and there isn't a lot, but is it possible we could split some out of the, if we weren't going to take it all out of the contingency, takes a little bit out of the supplies account that's there and some out of the contingency?
And then if he needed more money for supplies, he could come to us later.
Split the difference, then? Just divide that in half?
We could do that.
Madam President, I have a question on this.
Sure.
So, nobody owned the house. That burned?
Well...
The mortgage company owns the house.
So the mortgage company owns the house. So the mortgage company should be who we go after for this.
Exactly, that's...
Here's the situation. That the property needs to be boarded. The boarding company's not going to do it unless they get paid. The mortgage company has an interest in the property, but in my understanding was they didn't foreclose. So what we need to do is to get this boarding done because there's requirements for public safety that this be done. The town's going to have to advance the funds, and then afterwards, we can go against the property and whoever the owner is at that time. But to get to that point, it's going to take some time. And the boarding company is not going to say, "We'll put the lien on, we'll just do the work and wait" because they know it's going to take a long time. You need to know that, too. This is not, these are not funds that are going to be obtained easily or quickly.
How quickly can we turn around and hit them in something like, I mean, it's under three grand? Can't we take them to small claims court, you know, hopefully win and win trouble damages?
Well, the answer to that question is, is no, because there's a question about how this property is actually owned. They have an interest in it. But oftentimes, in these situations, the, their lien is there. They have their mortgage, but they're not fully foreclosed on it because they know that there's liabilities. This is a big issue in the state, and there may come a time for this property after it's boarded that the town will actually have to put them in receivership to get all of these issues straightened out.
Tony, it's my understanding, it's already been boarded. This is a bill. This is not a, this is not a request.
I beg your pardon. You're correct.
This was boarded over the summer, like it was in August.
So we owe this money?
Yes.
It's not like we're looking to...
Yes. I'm sorry, you're correct.
So we're going to be deadbeats if we don't pay?
Absolutely.
I think it's kind of unrealistic. If you divide this in half, it's almost $1,200 that we have. I don't know where we take it from, if we take it from supplies and miscellaneous, we would only leave him $500 for the rest of the year because it's $1184 divided in half.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to take it all from the council contingency fund, and we'll get it back later.
I'll second Counselor Bill.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion? Now, my question is, when we do get paid, where does that go, though?
The general fund.
That goes into the general fund and will never come back into this budget. I just want to make that clear.
That's correct, yes.
What, Nancy?
Yeah, I don't...
No, we're not going to get it this year, anyway.
I don't see that happening, actually.
Okay.
I just didn't want to. I was saying, to take it from Neil's budget, I thought we could just use that money.
No, we can't. All right, so motions remain in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous to take from the council contingency.
Thank you, Madam President.
...store locked up tonight.
New business, Rebecca Riley, Bike Tiverton Management Committee, permission to establish an account in the name of this organization with the town treasurer. Rebecca?
It takes four to replace...
I was going to say, this is not Rebecca.
Rebecca, can I be, for this tonight, there's a direct meeting problem.
All right, if you just want to introduce yourselves.
My name is Peter Monis.
And I'm Carolyn Wyman.
Yes.
And would represent Bike Tiverton here in North Island, which is an informal group, grassroots group of people that wants to improve biking safety, that's the key, safety, and across pedestrian and walkers and joggers in the town of Tiverton. I think we have a mission statement in your package, comprehensive plan, paperwork and all that stuff. Do you have any questions about that? We'll answer those later on. Go ahead.
And the purpose of this request is to ask the town to set up an account on our behalf to accept donations made to support the work of our organization related to developing the Mount Hope Bay Greenway Tiverton Trail. The Narragansett Bay Wheelman, a statewide biking organization, has approved a grant of $2,650 to support communications and outreach activities related to the Tiverton Trail development. So we need a fiscal account from the town in order to deposit these funds and go forward with the support of the Greenway.
Basically, we're asking a custodian account.
Yep.
Where the town will take the money in from our grants and donations and safeguard it so that we won't be having our, basically, our hands on it to protect the money donated to us. And we already, I already talked to Denise about this, and she's...
She's shaking her head yes to me that this is okay, so...
She was willing to do that, but we need the town council approval before this can be enacted. So basically, that's it. It's a custodian account to receive funds for benefit of town of Tiverton.
Yep.
And it's basically like Carolyn says for the bike path, but we also do, we're going to work for safety for outside of the bike path and pedestrians and joggers and all that.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
Just one, actually, for the treasurer. Is there going to be any additional cost to the town to establish this account? Are we not holding it at a bank or anything?
Of course we are.
Is the path of this bike path in stone, you're going to go by the railroad tracks? Is that what you're going to do?
That's the safest route to take for biking in Tiverton. It's an off-road path. If you want to bike on Highland Road...
No, I don't want to go on Highland Road, but Main Road would be better than down by there because you're opening up a path, you're opening up a path for trouble.
Main Road is available for biking already.
Perfect.
It's got a lane.
Yep.
But it's not safe for, 100% safe, or never 100%, let me say that, but biking, biking path has more than just recreational purposes. Has an economic impact for the town of Tiverton. When you have a bike path in town, it brings...
It brings criminals.
Well, not only...
And they might leave Tiverton, too.
Yeah.
Bikers like that. But that's going to be, that's going to be discussed later on, and it's going to be controls and, we are aware of that, and I think you're really...
I live right there, that's why.
There's a lot of people that live on bike paths. You should take a ride...
But not coming from a project in Fall River.
Well, that doesn't, I think this discussion's getting...
Is it not the time for this?
No.
I'll get you next time.
Well, this is just, that's not on the agenda.
Can I just say one more thing?
You may.
The town has already supported our STIP application. It went in with the other ones from the town through the DPW.
DOT.
DOT, right.
But DPW was the one that submitted for Tiverton. And we're still on the priority list but remain unfunded at the present time for the rail-to-trail project. But we're not alone in this, as it turns out that there's no allocation of funding for any bike projects at the time in the state until they have finished with the statewide bicycle master plan, and that's probably not going to be completed till summertime. So the last time we came to town council, it was to get approval to go through the STIP process.
Any other questions?
Madam President, I actually have a question for the town treasurer, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Since, and I think this is a fine idea about the bike path, but I just want to be sure, if we set up, if we have an account, and technically, your organization isn't an organization, correct? It's a loose group of people, but it's not...
It's non-fiber one through that.
Right, right. My question is really for Denise, if people are making donations, or especially if there's grant money, if the town's the holder of it, if for some reason, a grant isn't spent on exactly what it was supposed to be spent on, are there some sort of, are we liable? I just want to make sure that there's a process so that if there's a dispute with someone who gives you a grant about how the money was spent, especially since you don't have a formal organization, that we're not the responsible party.
Well, I think we would be, but we'd have to be responsible to spend the money the way it was intended, and that would be in the hands of the grant writers.
Basically, this was a gift. Basically, this was a gift, like a grant. We didn't write a grant for it. It came to us.
It came to you for a set purpose, though.
For a set purpose.
Did you already get the funds?
He wants to send them by the end of the month.
So it's not a reimbursable grant? It's like an endowment?
It's a song of money to bike at Tiverton.
We want the town treasurer just to be the custodian of it, to hold it in place. And then we're going to do the work of make sure that we follow what the money was granted to us for. It was for trying to push children to ride bikes safely, and we would have to work that direction. As for the bike path, promote that, then we'll have to go in that direction.
I mean, I'm fine with it. I maybe, I think Tony and Denise know what I'm asking here, which is, since technically your organization doesn't report to the town, right? We don't really have any oversight of your organization. And the off chance, someone in your organization, I know you wouldn't do it, I'm just asking, though, depending on how much money you collect, somehow spends this money in a way that the donors or the grantee didn't intend. Is the town liable, or do we need some sort of process just to make sure? Because at some point, you might be collecting more donations than this. I'm assuming that this is a start, but you're hoping to get more money from other places.
Well, Mr. Monis did say that they were planning on forming their own 501(c)(3).
Yeah, that's what it says in the letter. That they're not ready, but, right.
And also, I believe...
So this is just in the meantime, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe in, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't the garden club have a custodian account with you guys, really?
No.
No? Somebody told me.
No.
Madam President?
The entity of questions, yes, by the way.
We would be responsible.
Yes, you would.
Is there, I mean, I don't want to be applying the right man here, but if you're going to be collecting more money, should there just be some sort of policy or procedure just to make sure? In other words, that somebody...
Well, there should be.
There should be something...
If it's a reimbursable grant, that's the stopgap.
Right.
You know, we don't get reimbursed if we don't spend it properly.
Right.
So that's where we make sure that it's, you know, it's all done according to the grant documents.
Madam President, just a question, maybe. Well, so you're going to, you say you're ready to, you're going to apply for a 501(c)(3). If you apply for a 501(c)(3) and you get it, is it, is this question become moot?
It takes a while to apply for...
It takes time.
It's quite a process to get a 501(c)(3).
We're squeezed because they want to give us the money by the end of the year for their books.
But do we have... To answer your question.
Yes.
Once this group gets their 501(c)(3) status, then it would not be appropriate for the town to have a custodian account.
Then it would or it wouldn't be?
It would not.
Would not. Right, but that's what I'm saying, it's a moot. So you're talking about, they want to give it to you at the end of this, before the end of this year?
And this is like a first step, we're asking for a custodian account.
Right.
Our group and the treasurer, we have to get together, and we have to set some policies for recall, how the money's going to be handled. Who's going to sign for reimbursements and direct, you know, make sure this is verified that this money received, especially from this particular group, will be spent in that direction what they want to go. So it's not going to be like, you know, here's the money, and you do what you want. It's not going to be that situation.
Counselor, little Bo.
Do we have approval for this bike path already on the design here? Because it's kind of a moot point to start collecting money for something that hasn't been approved. I don't know that way it's been approved or not.
That's next question. It's not approved, it's on the list, but it's not approved in front of it. It's been on the list for about 15 years. Now, what's the second question?
I was just wondering, why collect money for something you're not going to be able to spend if it doesn't get approved?
Because it's the idea of trying to promote the idea of a safe means of biking in Tiverton and walking. So that money that comes in, we're going to promote safety.
Okay, so...
And the safest way, like I said before, is a bike path in Tiverton that's off-road. And one more point about the bike path in your neighborhood, still open to the question in 2024, the state DOT about trains. There's a possibility trains might come back there yet, too.
Yeah, that's what they're saying, but I'm not worried about...
There may be a lot of people, gangsters coming because of the train.
Yeah, they, yeah, well.
All right.
But I'm just making sure that you're not going to have a big pile of money, and you do say you collect a hundred grand.
I don't think we're going to get millions of dollars.
Hundred grand. You collect a hundred grand, and then...
If you want to give us a hundred grand, we'll take it.
I might, if it wasn't going in front of my house. You have all that money and no approval, what do you do with the money? That's the only, that's the only thing I'm asking. Where does the money go?
We're going to promote whatever they want to be done.
But are we going to be...
We're going to promote the bike path. They said we're going to have more, like you guys have a fund for...
Right, right, our contingency fund. So you'll have a bike path contingency fund.
We can use that money for supplies, to make copies, to...
So basically, it doesn't have to build a bike path, you can use it any way you want on a bike or some other path somewhere else. It doesn't have to be to build one you don't have permission to build yet.
Madam President, what Mr. Monis said is that it was for communication and outreach. So Randy, that should, if it's communication and outreach, it's not building a bike path. It's communication and outreach, so it sounds like they could use that money for that, and that's, is that, isn't that correct? That's what you just said.
All right.
Yes.
It's secondary funding for outside, yes. The bike path will be hopefully by the state of Rhode Island.
Tony, I just have a question. Before we vote on this, shouldn't we have a better idea of the structure of this and more rules regarding this before we establish this account because of our liability? Should they work with Denise? And like, I'm uncomfortable doing this right now because of the liability, without some kind of rules or steps that's going to be done.
Understood, but that, I'd leave that to the town treasurer, actually.
Are you comfortable with that? I'm okay. I wouldn't want to see them lose their opportunity to get these funds.
Okay, as long as you are comfortable with dealing with that yourself. Any other questions? Like to entertain a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to grant the town treasurer permission to establish an account in the name of Bike Tiverton, however she so chooses to do so.
Second. Any further discussion?
Ken, we just have addition on that to say, until such time as a 501(c)(3) organization is formed and the proceeds can be transferred to that organization.
Good catch. I will accept.
So that's an amended motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Okay.
Not me.
Against.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town administrator, ratification of amendment to contract for tax assessor David Robert for a 2% salary increase to $63,618 for third year of contract to December 10, 2018. Any discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. Last week, distributed the annual performance review for tax assessor. I can say without reservation, that was, it was an outstanding report, and he's done well by the town, or the town has done well by him. So recommending a 2% increase, which is standard for our department.
Any discussion? Like to entertain a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to ratify amendment to the contract for tax assessor David Robert for a 2% salary increase to $73,618 for third year of contract, December 10, 2018.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm on the internet.
I thought you laughed at me.
Counselor DiMadera's vote to proceed with advertisement for town administrator. What you see in front of you is what we put out last year. Any discussion? I'd like permission to do this as soon as possible. Do I entertain a motion?
Madam President.
Counselor Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to have the, I guess, the clerk and the...
Could it be the clerk?
The clerk, I have the clerk proceed with the advertisement for town administrator.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Do you show? Okay.
The only thing I had a question about with the holidays is the date of January 15th. Does everybody think that that...
Oh, it's Nancy's recommendation.
Well, I fill that part in, but I'm going to check on the dates of when I can get it, you know, posted in the papers and on the, so I may change that 15th to 16th or, but you want at least 30 days when the data goes out, right?
Right. And it's the holidays, too.
Right, so I'm, yeah. Are you saying you, I'll go towards 17, 18, then?
You might want to go towards 20.
Towards January 20th? Okay.
Don't you think so that at least this, more time after...
Because of the holidays.
People aren't...
Yeah, and if I can't get it in the papers till the beginning of next week or the weekend, I'll push it a day, a day or two.
Counselor DiMadera's appointment of interim administrator. We need to appoint someone. Paul Grace, graciously, is going to stay till December 35th, so we'll need to appoint an interim administrator, and he needs time to work with that person. In the past, the town clerk, Nancy, has done it. This will be the third time, and she's done a very good job at it, especially during budget time. I don't know if anyone else had any other ideas.
Madam President.
Counselor, little Bo.
I'd say we possibly think about Chief Blakey coming in. He's been in town, he knows contracts, he's, you know, he no longer has a job, and he can possibly sit in and deal with the contracts. He knows the ups and downs of the town. Will he's Nancy, so she doesn't have to do it? Just a suggestion.
I just think that Nancy, because she's been involved in our executive sessions, she knows key things that are going on right now. She would be, it's not going to be forever, but I think she could easily just continue the work. And she knows, she's worked with the entire budget before, and she's been able to work through that with the budget committee in the past. And she, I just personally think, because she's, no one's been more involved with us than Nancy, and I think she could easily just keep things going until we, until we get someone without much of a learning curve whatsoever. I think someone who, of course, has been around town, or someone like Chief Blakey knows certain things, but not quite sure he knows all the issues we're dealing with. And all, of course, we all know how complicated some of them are. And I just think that Nancy's well equipped to do that for the next couple of months.
Madam President?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, do you foresee any issues coming up? Because I know we have some departmental staffing issues on your side. I just want to make sure that this wouldn't be an undue burden on you.
It's not the staffing issue. It's not going to be a burden on me because I do not do the recordings and type the vitals. I have, I think I've covered my office fine for this, especially if the part-time clerk is approved tonight. I think, and I, we've made arrangements for Leona to remain full-time, at least for the week or so that I'll have an issue in there. So I don't foresee that being a big problem. It is time-consuming, though. I'm not offended by anybody suggesting someone else. I can tell you, I'll only be performing the same as in the past. I'll hold the fort, do what needs to be done, continue what can be done. I'm not going to do it for the $200 you got away with last time. This is actually my seventh time of doing this, and we'll have to make a better arrangement for payment. Probably the difference, which is like over a month, would be one week of pay to your town administrator. But I mean, other than that, I can't, I will only be doing what I've done in the past, exactly the same way. And this council's had it, as have six other times. But that's completely up to the council, and you don't slight me in the least if you have someone else in mind for this.
So if you think we could find somebody comparable to you and have to, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that if we can, because you're going to have problems, well, only where I see, because there's other issues coming up, which is, I'm next on here. I just don't want to see you have to be all stressed out, especially with the budget season.
I'm not worried about my staff on my end. They're trained, and they assist me where they can. So I'm not worried about that part. I'm more worried about other issues that we all know go on that could undermine things. But other than that, I don't have a problem.
Counselor Hilton?
By the way, you can always step in at any time and say you want to change if you have some, you know, if you're not satisfied.
I'd trade you the job.
No, no.
Everybody'd be fired.
Counselor Hilton?
I can't actually think of anybody more qualified to be the interim than Nancy. And I actually think if we add it up for the seven times that she's been interim administrator, Nancy might be, in the cumulative, our longest-serving administrator ever. That's possible. And I just want to say, I would feel extraordinarily comfortable, actually, I'd feel really good if I knew that Nancy was in that position.
Would you like to make a motion? Go ahead.
Madam President, was there anybody else that came forward to...
Not to me.
To the town clerk?
There was, I don't know if they came forward to any councilors, but there was a gentleman that came into my office today and asked what the job of interim town administrator was, and I explained it to him. And he knew it was on the agenda tonight, and that's what he said to me.
Any other, Joan, any other questions?
Uh, no.
Anyone else? Like to entertain a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nancy Mello as interim town administrator.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Just that I truly believe that Nancy would be overwhelmed at this point in time, certainly with her staff and things that are coming down the pike that we all know of. I think she would be overwhelmed.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Against? Two. Okay.
They'd be overwhelmed.
Counselor, little Bo.
They'd be overwhelmed, but you realize that is going to be at a difference of salary than the last time.
Yes. Counselor, little Bo, discussion on staffing offices during clerk's absence.
Yeah, it's come to my attention, I guess everybody knows now, that we're going to have problems in the bill and department. Again, it won't be staffed for probably six weeks or so, from the 28th of December, probably through mid-February. And I would like to go out immediately to a clerk, to a temp agency, to get somebody in there Monday, Tuesday, tomorrow, and have them start training, go to a temp agency for a couple of weeks, have Jody train them to give permits and answer the phone and answer questions. There may be a small union problem, but there's nothing we can't deal with after the fact because this needs, the place needs to be open. So we go to a temp agency, put somebody in there for three weeks, she can learn the job and how to give permits and write permits, or whatever it takes, so the door can be open. Our tax collector, he's never closed. People can come here and pay their taxes, and pay, and pay, and pay, but nobody can get a permit. So we need to have that office, just like we do the tax office, open. If we can do this legally...
I'm concerned it might be more than a small union problem. I'm not quite sure.
Well, you know, I have to say that, you know, you have competent labor council, and I'm not, I'm not comfortable giving you any advice on that at this time. I think this is something that, this proposal should be referred to Mr. Cavazza for his analysis on this. I don't, I don't, I want to make sure that I'm not saying anything that would be in cross purposes with him. He has the primary responsibility for matters of this nature. It is a union position.
Right.
So I do think that you need, the council would need his input before doing anything on this matter. So my recommendation would be to refer the matter over to Mr. Cavazza for his analysis and recommendation.
How quickly? How quickly can we get that?
I just have a question, Paul. Did you know about this idea, was it discussed with Jenny Cavazza? Did you know the Councilor Bowe's gonna bring this up?
Well, I know, because we're on the agenda.
About the temp?
If I may, give another view of what the situation is. We have advertised for a full-time land use clerk that will be in that office. That closes on the 15th of December, this next Friday. We've received, talking to Jim Camara of the Personnel, we've received about 20 or so, 22 resumes for that. So it's a very good, you know, field of people. So, Jim, the Personnel Board will convene the week of the 18th for interviews of those people. So we'll have a pretty good idea before the Christmas week if there's somebody in that field, that pool, that we can hire. Now, they can't start tomorrow, but also the clerk, the building office clerk is not leaving tomorrow. She's probably be on FMLA around the 28th. And in conversation with her and the building officer, we really don't think it's gonna be six weeks. That may have been said at some point or another, but the conversation I had with her last week was more in the realm of three weeks or four weeks, and then maybe some periodic times when she's here. So... or when she'll be back, you know, on and off days. It's... the building office, as we know, staffing is a problem. But it can be mitigated. We are working to get this new clerk on. And I think if you stay the course and get this clerk full-time, not a temp who has limited interest in the job in the first place other than just showing up and doing their thing, and then taking the next temp job. Get the full-time person on, take the time to do it, get them trained, make sure they're comfortable in there, they wanna do the job, and move forward. That's my recommendation. It's a really good recommendation. But the problem is, the office won't be open for you. It's gonna be six weeks before that person can walk in the door. That's not true either. We've put a place... a policy in place that when the clerk is out, that Neo, the building officer, will be there from 8:30 to 12, doing what administrative stuff has to happen to move these permits along. That's what he was doing during the week of her vacation a couple of weeks ago. She's back now, not an issue, but he is on-call. The plan would revert to an 8 to 12. Those doors are open. So this land use clerk that you're speaking of now, will... if something happens meanwhile, or after she's hired, or he's hired, whoever it may be, and there's an issue, there's a clerk needed in that department, this person will be able to step right in and know the job after, once we get him on staff and everything's... That this clerk will know how to support the planning board. This clerk will know how to support the building office, which means what Jody currently does. Okay, hi, oh.
We're working on it.
We're working on it. You know, my time is limited here. I've only got three weeks, but give me two. Give me two weeks. It's just, I don't like to see it happen like that, because it's frustrating when you come in here and try to do things right. That's why Tiverton, it's easy to ask for forgiveness. Then permission, because you can't get permission, there's nobody there. So we need to get this little things like LJ's thing thing. We need to get these small things swayed away, and then we're almost there. Close.
Yes.
Thank you, I'm done.
Okay. Any further discussion? Planning Board recommendation request to accept on-call planning consulting service of Allison Ring, AB Planning and Mapping, and Ashley V. Sweet, professional planning consultant. Stu, did you wanna say anything, or...
Well, I... you all have my letter. We, the planning board, met on the 5th of December, and we discussed this. It was on our agenda. And many of us know both Ashley Sweet and Allison Ring. Allison Ring, for example, did a lot of the work to clean up and finalize our draft comprehensive community plan. Did a very good job. Both of these individuals are well-known to statewide planning, and both of them were recommended to us to do the work that we finally hired Allison to do on the comp plan. Both of them are... have a lot of background, and they're both AICP-certified planners. So they were simply recommending that they... Their names be added to the pool of resource people that will be available to the town administrator and to the planning board to do specific planning tasks that need to be done. So we're not hiring them as personnel. We're simply adding them to a pool of resource people who we can then call upon as tasks come up and that we need. Paul, did I get that right?
So far, keep going.
That's all I have to say.
Just to remind you, just so you know, what you're voting on is to put them on the list. We are not engaging any money at this point.
Madam President.
Yeah, any questions?
I just have one for Stu, he's walking away.
The man was off the hook.
No, almost. How often does the planning board seek, you know, these type of services? Because I mean, I notice...
Almost never, almost never. We... we've done it from time to time in the past. The Cecil Group helped us when we were doing the hybrid zoning that we did for the commercial districts a couple of years ago. And of course, Allison Sweet, Allison Ring, as I mentioned, helped us with the comprehensive community plan. But absent a planner, there will be some complicated issues that we well need professional help on. So... and particularly when our draft comprehensive community plan is approved, then statewide planning expects the town of Tiverton to move rather quickly to bring our zoning into conformity with the new comp plan. And that will require a lot of changes in the zoning ordinance. And we may... and that gets pretty technical, and we may need services there. So I don't see it... I don't see it happening extensively.
Madam President, a little elaboration. So this is envisioned not as a final way of doing planning in this town. This is a stopgap between now and the, hopefully, the approval of the budget that I proposed to you, where I do have a planner in the budget, recommended. But the things have to go on between now and then, and whatever may happen. So this is to allow the planning board and/or the administrator a quick way to get someone that they can bring to you and request a small contract to do something or another. Also, just so you know, Allison Ring, actually, we... You passed several weeks ago. You've actually extended her contract to help finish up the comp plan. So she's on a very specific contract to do that.
Any further discussion? Like to entertain a motion?
Madam President, make a motion to accept the on-call planning consulting service of Allison Ring, AB Planning and Mapping, and Ashley V. Sweet, professional planning consultant, per Stuart Hardy's recommendation. Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those... any further discussion? All those in favor? Town clerk authorization to advertise and hire a part-time employee for the clerk's office? Nancy?
I've put this request in because, you know, with the reorganization, we did send the municipal court workers going over to the police department as half a position in there. But I'm requesting that as a... at that time, we had discussed with the administrator and the labor and the union, I would still need seasonal workers to work with the election process and this, that, and the other. After reviewing it enough, I think we need the part-time clerk in that office steadily, as opposed to just seasonal. So I am requesting that we be able to hire a part-time clerk in there, especially with election time coming up next November. There are primaries. We gear into this... well, it's really a year-round, but we gear more into this come March, April, and May. We have the primaries, and we also have the FTR, and then we have the primary and the general. So I'm thinking that, as opposed to the seasonal, we just don't think it'll work out well in that office that I should have the part-time. And if the council does approve this part-time clerk in there, I would also request that we be able to use to selector from the pool that we have coming forward for our book... For interviews on the...
Land use clerk.
Land use clerk. I did speak to the Personnel Board chair. Jim Camara has spoken to me a few times about it. And I think it really would be beneficial to the town if, when they're doing all those interviews, they kind of keep a little list for the year, because we spend a lot of money on these advertising, and then we'll go back out to re-advertise shortly. And it still is all the basic clerical skills that they need. So I'd like to also be able to hire from that pool, if anybody is willing to take a part-time position. And maybe the council should consider keeping a list of qualified applicants there, at least for a year at a time.
So you're not really asking for authorization to advertise, you're asking authorization to take from that pool? That is already...
Well, to hire, and then, as opposed to advertising, it was discussed after the fact on this, that why not take from the pool?
My question is, are you budgeted? Where's the budget coming from?
So how this will work is, originally, the full position money was gonna go over to the land use clerk to pay for that. So only half of it, obviously, will go over there. The other half will come from the unfilled part-time inspector. So the land use clerk is covered.
Oh, I got it.
The part-time, because she already has that money to begin with. The... what that leaves, that is the unused money for the administrative officer and the planner, which is over $50,000, half of which that hasn't been used. So that gives us the flexibility both to fund the planner services and a decision that, at this point, the new town administrator will make a recommendation of hiring a land use administrator.
And the town will actually still benefit from a savings on healthcare benefits.
It will, yeah, because it's...
Madam President.
Yes.
Was the money for this clerk that we're gonna hire, the land use clerk, that was way more than a clerk for your office? Are they gonna be willing to... No, roughly the same. Roughly the same. It was the same money? Oh, okay. I thought they were looking for like $60,000 for the... No, no. A land use, the salary is... entering salary's around 35, but then add $25,000 in benefits regardless. Oh, that's where I got my sick leave from.
Madam President?
Yes.
Good job.
At 19 hours per week, is this... this is not a benefited position, correct?
No.
Okay.
All right. I'd entertain a motion. Yeah, go ahead.
What was I saying? Motion to authorize the clerk to hire a part-time employee for the clerk's office out of the pool of applicants for the land use and zoning person.
Second.
And that's okay, Tony, if we do it that way?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Police chief, or acting police chief, requests permission to hire a full-time dispatcher. I'll go.
Captain, go ahead.
So, given the recent retirement of Mrs. Mellow, the chief's administrative assistant, we had a test for the position of administrative assistant, and one of the dispatchers currently moved into that position. She actually started today, which gives us an opening in the dispatch center. So fortunately for us, the dispatcher, Ms. Silva, she was a day shift employee. So that gives us... it also reduces the overtime, because we can use other day shift employees to move in until we can hire the full-time person. Currently, there is an application process that's due to expire on the 22nd. And like I spoke with Ms. Mellow, the same kind of idea that we've already advertised for part-time. We're gonna just expand that to full-time. So from that list, we're going to hire that part-time municipal court clerk for the police department and the full-time dispatcher to replace Mrs. Mellow's position.
Any questions?
Madam President.
Do you have a question, Joan? You look like you have a question, though.
Well, advertising for a part-time and then trying to get a...
A full-time for a part-time.
People may not have applied for a part-time position because they were looking for a full-time.
The advertisement actually went out for part-time, full-time, and per diem, which is the way we...
There you go. Okay. Yeah, she's smarter than she looks. Yeah, no, I'm only kidding.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to grant the police chief permission to hire a full-time dispatcher.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Easier than your predecessor had it, huh?
Town clerk advertisement for municipal court judge, which we talked about.
Yeah, I believe you already discussed that.
Yeah, okay. Where'd Tony go?
The girls room.
The only time he leaves, he's on. All right. You have bad timing.
Madam President, just one more question on that. On the advertisement for the municipal court judge, is just posting it in the Sconnet Times enough? Or do you want it elsewhere?
What do we usually do for... while we...
We only put it in the Sconnet Times.
As long as they advertise it, we'll be fine.
I can. I'll be going there to put the police chiefs. Problem with that is sometimes you have to have an extended time, because they only put out that about the beginning of the month or something like that. But I'll put it on, just like the others. Yes.
If I could make a suggestion. If you need a lawyer, put in the Rowan Barter.
And that may be a monthly thing, so it's gonna take over one of the...
As long as that's all right with Attorney Donley, Judge Donley.
When Mr. Donley is away for any reason, the charter allows...
Oh, that's right.
...a probate judge who happens to be a municipal court judge in another community.
That's right. All right. Town solicitor, host community agreement, operation for discussion and possible action.
Okay, this springs from the report that Councilor Ryan gave earlier, the main work of the Casino Subcommittee. I'm not going to get into the whereas of the court rules. But you'll see in Section 1, the host community agreement development term, the terms and conditions there incorporated into this agreement. And in Number 2, public safety protocols. The situation here is, you know, in Exhibit A...
Did you guys get the exhibits?
No.
No. Did we? No. I didn't see exhibits.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Did you get exhibits? No, no, no. No.
No, we didn't get the exhibits.
I got the exhibits, Tony, but I think it was from the Subcommittee.
Yeah, I don't have the...
Is it the same exhibits in the Subcommittee? Maybe they didn't.
I think that... I had talked and said that there weren't... The exhibits weren't there, so I got... I don't know. Maybe you sent them? I'm not sure.
I sent them to Nancy.
Yeah, and I think you may have sent them to the Subcommittee. I just assumed that... so the rest of the town clerk didn't get them?
No.
Okay.
I... that's where I got them, I think.
You've got them? You've got them? Sorry, I have such a headache. All right. Do you have the exhibits? Who has the exhibits right now? Although they weren't given to us to look at prior to the meeting.
Yeah, you know what? It says on the... it says on the... It says on the top, Town Council Casino Subcommittee. So I went to the Subcommittee, I got the protocols. That's the Exhibit A is the public safety protocols from the fire and the...
You have two exhibits in this agreement. One, A, is the public safety protocol. C would be the maintenance of landscaping of the roundabout.
Yeah, I got that, too.
I got both right there.
Did you get it, Randy?
Yeah.
Where?
Exhibit A, right there.
No, no, that's... The licensing ordinance is open for that.
Yeah. Okay. So, if we could get... is there any way to get copies of that right now?
Well...
Who has them?
I'm gonna tell you this. The Casino Subcommittee's done what they've done. I don't think there's a press for this to be approved now, because this is operations. I would prefer to have it that the council takes a look at the exhibits first and has a chance to review them, rather than just going...
Also, there's an Exhibit C they talk about.
A and C. A C is the landscaping of the roundabout.
What happened to B?
There is no B in this one.
B is being held until you...
B is being held until you have a chance to decide hours of operation. It's an hours of operation exhibit, so that's why it goes A, C.
So we're not going to, so you didn't feel we needed that?
It's not a good duty.
So why don't we have Exhibit B? Because we're not going to discuss hours of operation?
Those exhibits, A and C, actually came from other parts, so there is no B. That's my opinion.
But why don't we have a B? Because that...
We don't even have an A or a C right now.
No, right, but what I'm saying is, if B is hours of operation, why don't we have that?
The landscaping roundabout was an Exhibit C in a prior agreement, so we just kept the C.
Oh. But when are we going to talk about hours of operation?
Which prior agreement?
That's what I'm asking. I think that's what my major question is.
Actually, I want to get to that, but we haven't gotten over the exhibits thing.
Okay. So what are we going to do?
Me? You've got the...
Oh, no, I'm just holding this up here.
So on 2, that's something I think you need to see first.
Okay.
So let's skip right to 3.
Okay.
There was no recommendation on the hours of operation.
Okay.
That's something I think that needs to be discussed at the council level. That is a very serious issue and something I think that the council is going to need to take a look at on its own, that it's such a big issue. So that was left blank here. That's something that can be inserted later on, once there's an agreement from the council. I don't think the Casino Subcommittee was comfortable in making a recommendation on that.
Correct, there were three things that were, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, that goes to 4. These are the licensing ordinances.
Right.
And when it says subject to the safety protocols, that goes back to Exhibit A, so that's Exhibit 1. But these are all the recommendations from the Casino Subcommittee. And that is the liquor licensure, licensure B from 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Monday to Thursday, and 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Friday, Saturday and Sundays before state or federal holidays.
My question is, the rest of the town doesn't have this privilege? They're 12A to, they're 12, 12P to 1A.
That's correct, yes.
Is that correct? So your ask is to do a special audit instance for...
I asked you to do anything.
Well, it is a recommendation that we do a special audit instance for the casino.
That was the recommendation. Now, my only point on this, and this is the one thing I wanted to just say, this is a host community agreement, but it's an agreement. Now ultimately, the council is going to have to enact licenses for the casino because they, under state law, casinos have a separate license, they don't get B licenses.
Right.
They have their own G licenses, I believe. So before you approve this, I think you need to do that in conjunction with your ordinances. And you're correct. Is this different than what other liquor licensees have in the town?
Absolutely.
Yes, you're correct, yes. Now...
We make a special audit instance just for the casino, that's correct.
That is correct, yes. And that's because it's a, it's a separate license under state law. So you're going to need to enact a license anyway. And then the question becomes, what do you do for hours of operation? This is a recommendation from the Casino Subcommittee.
Which I would assume is what the casino wanted, 10A to 2A on those days.
There's a state law that allows you, if you decide to adopt an ordinance for a Class B, C license, which is just for casinos. What we'd like to be able to do at the appropriate time, once the council has a chance to see the exhibits and schedule something, is we'd like to put on, you know, have the ability to put on a presentation on hours, including liquor license hours, and, you know, tell you the reasons why we think...
10A is appropriate.
We need things to be competitive and so forth, and obviously, the decision is ultimately up to you, but we'd like to be able to make that presentation.
Madam President?
John?
So under Section 4, I'm a little confused because it's 10A to 1A, Monday to Thursday, and then 10A to 2A, Friday, Saturday and only Sundays before state or federal holidays. So it seems like we've omitted Sundays, regular Sundays from that.
Yeah, you would, you would only be open until 1, you would only serve until 1:00 AM on Sunday, that's the state law.
What I mean is, it's silent on 1:00 AM.
Oh, does it say?
Yeah, Sunday's just omitted, so we're going to fix that.
Yeah, it doesn't have anything for Sunday.
I see what you're saying, I missed it.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
So it should, it should say Sunday to Thursday and then the Friday, Saturday and then Sundays before...
You know what I mean? Because it looks like they can't open on Sunday at all. They can't serve liquor at all on Sunday. Unless it's before the state holiday.
Yes.
Um, does any, we don't have to prove this tonight, of course not, okay. Does anyone have any comments on this? Councilor LeBeau's looking at what he does.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see the casino liquor hours the same as our restaurants, only because it's going to be unfair advantage to our restaurants. Because they're going to say, well, it's 11:30, we can drink at the casino until 2:00, let's go. And they're all headed to the casino and they're going to abandon our other alcoholic establishments in town. We got to be fair to everybody in this, in this. Either we give it to everybody until 2:00 AM or not, the casino. So we change it so it's 10 to 2:00 AM. The same thing we give the casino, we give to everybody, that we were all on the same playing field. They're not going to bail out to try to head to the casino for their last drink.
Again, I'd like to have an opportunity to put on a presentation. I understand your position, but just to be able to put our public safety people on and just give you our position and debate that a little bit.
But that's okay, whatever we give you, my suggestion is going to be we give to everybody.
I understand.
So that's, if you, if it's good for you, then I'd say it's good for everybody. That was my only statement.
And I do, I don't know if I like the 10:00 AM everywhere.
Whatever we do for one, we have to do for everybody because we can't give, we can't give the casino unfair advantage over everybody who's been supporting this town for the last, since I've been here 55 years, so.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would agree with Councilor LeBeau and as, I believe, the only member of this council who has bartending experience, I think the 10:00 AM to 2:00 is, to me, is perfectly fine. I mean, part of, and I do agree we should extend it to everybody else in town, but any opportunity for the employees who work in the restaurant business to be able to make additional money, I think would be welcome. And ultimately, it's the reason why, part of the reason why the casino is here in Tiverton is because of the promise of jobs, and so we want those who do end up working at the casino to actually have it be worthwhile. So I think we should support that.
You're going to need to change the state law.
Right.
To allow, to allow for the 2:00 AM on this, on that amount.
We need to change our ordinance because the state, the state, the state law, as far as I understood it, was you can go till 2:00 and it's up to municipality to decide till when. Because Providence, Providence goes until 2:00 AM on the weekends in the summertime.
They changed, they changed the law specifically for that. For BVs right now, it's 1:00, unless you, unless you change the state law. And you can do that for Tiverton, just like Providence did too.
Let's go talk to the state delegation.
For 1:00, is it really relevant?
But this is a special license, we don't have it to do it for that.
That's correct, yes.
Because they have a different license than what a regular establishment, am I right?
That's correct, yes.
A regular establishment would have.
We have a BC.
Right.
Well, I tested your system out last night and I went to the casino and I stayed till it closed. And there was nobody there but me, so...
What time?
I don't know, I was out of money. I didn't look at the... They got me. It was very, very thin from 12 until 2:00 in the morning, whenever I left.
Which casino did?
The thing in Newport, the Highlight.
Well, it's not Highlight.
I went and tried it out and they're like, literally, there was, from 12 to 2, there was 10 of us and they're losing, so.
All right. But this has to be further discussion anyway.
That's correct, yes.
Including hours of operation also.
Correct, because you don't, to me, you need to pass your ordinances in conjunction with approving subsection 4.
All right. I just don't understand why subsection 3 doesn't have to be approved also before...
It does.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it does.
Well, because there's nothing written there as a proposal.
Yeah, it got eliminated by the subsection.
Well, I know, but I would like to have known what, I know what Twin Rivers wants to do because I was at the Subcommittee.
Yes.
But why wasn't that put there?
The vote was to eliminate it.
Well, I think it was because we thought we had to get it up here to the Town Council.
Okay.
So there was no point, because it was like a hot issue and it was like we could go on and on in the Subcommittee, but it was like, why? It was the Town Council that needed to hear about the whole argument. So that was, that was my understanding. And so it's like, well, let's just do it. And that was part of the reason, it's like, we can't do this, we can't, we can't decide, get it up to the Town Council.
Okay.
So that was the reason.
Okay.
If the council would like, once you set a time for further discussion, if you want us to give you the language that we would propose, if that helps, we can obviously do that.
Would this have to be a public hearing for any of these license?
No.
No.
The ordinances.
The ordinances, definitely.
The ordinances, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
While I certainly understand, you know, some thoughts in the council about being fair, and I think that's important, I would be curious to have Mr. Rousseau give a presentation because a casino isn't the same as any other entity either. So I'm not sure it is, in my mind, in apples-to-apples comparison, it might be an apples-to-oranges comparison. So I would like to hear from Twin Rivers and hear from them what they think they need to be competitive as part of our decision-making process.
All right. So what do we do with this tonight?
So can I just ask a question? Okay, so for Tony, I've got, I thought we had a couple of other things. You wanted to cross off number 5.
Yes.
Is that something that we should talk about now?
Yes, I actually wanted to discuss that.
Okay.
And also 4B, food service and entertainment would be by the guidelines set out, not only in the state law, but also your ordinances. So that's, you know, something else that you would enact, but it's also by the ordinance. They'd need their victualing license and things like that, so.
And one other thing that we discussed is that you talked about the, the number 5 has to, has to go because it has to get the, it's got to go through the FTR. But the other one you, we talked about, instead of putting 5, instead of just changing the numbers, we also talked about lighting. You were going to put the lighting in as well?
Yes.
I thought that was going to be number 5.
Yes.
Okay, so that's not in here either?
We just haven't gotten it because I have to make sure that it conforms to what the planning board has for the lighting consideration.
Yeah, okay.
But for 5, just so you know, on this, there was an issue as to whether or not there could be tax stabilization agreement with Twin River. But in my reading of the state law, any stabilization, so-called tax stabilization agreements would require an affirmative vote from the financial town referendum. Because that's the circumstance, because it goes through a process, because it's a public vote, I don't, this is actually one of the things I do recommend, I recommend that it not be in the host community agreement because it's just too many factors that would militate against that. And you don't want to get into a situation where you agreed to one thing and in the vote, that doesn't turn out the way that the agreement had. That would create some issues.
Okay. Anything else?
Maintenance of the landscape roundabout, you need to see. The employee parking lot, this is an issue that came up, and as part of the safety protocol, there shall be posted with the Tiverton PD. Any violations for the protocols that would prohibit loitering, excessive noise or litter in that parking lot. That was an issue about when employees came out, would that create a problem for the neighbors? That's why 7 is in there.
Okay.
8 is vendor deliveries. Deliveries will be taken between the hours of 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. So that would, you know, preclude shipments coming in in the middle of the night type of a thing, which also has a neighborhood impact. Local hiring and purchasing preferences, this is something that took quite a bit of time for the Subcommittee. And that is, as you can read, Twin River agrees to employ good faith efforts to provide preference to vendors and suppliers located in Tiverton and on Aquinix Island in starting up the operations. They've also agreed that they'd undertake initial efforts to identify a pool of candidates from the town for potential employment during the operational period of the casino. And I think this already started, I'll let...
Saturday.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And they've also agreed to conduct job fairs to help develop this pool of candidates. And at their cost, they train the qualified individuals chosen from the pool of candidates. And also, they would assist in offering employment from the pool of candidates for the necessary state licensure because to work, you need your state licenses, so that's something that they would undertake and they've agreed to that. And also, they would have a career page on the town and Tiverton website that would list all open employment positions. And they would use a good faith effort to provide priority to Tiverton residents to fill the open positions.
And that's after the casino opens as well?
Correct.
Correct.
That's forever, so.
Job fairs will be for the initial employees and then as you have positions open during operations.
You'll fill through Tiverton first?
Another one of the issues came up was the, Twin River working good faith to make sure that the town businesses can participate in these promotional rewards program where players can redeem gift cards that can be used at Tiverton businesses.
Like gunshots?
All right, well, we'll just keep going.
Before they get, before they get on the bike.
I like that line.
Hey, let's keep going.
Also, one of the, one of the other issues that was addressed by the Subcommittee was communications between the town and Twin River. And the town administrator be the contact person for the town. And Ms. Ward was sentenced by Twin River to handle those communications on your...
She is a sentence, she is. Kim's over there. Yes.
I just have one question for the solicitor. Is it wise to name Kim Ward specifically in this document that may exist into perpetuity? You know, what if Kim's no longer with Twin River Tiverton, is she still going to be our liaison per the host community agreement?
So we could just put Executive Director of Public and Community Affairs?
We could just put the position, yeah.
Kim, they've got you fired and gone.
Perhaps, perhaps you guys know something that we don't.
I don't know.
Tim's just shrugging his shoulders, like, okay.
Just looking out, just looking out for Tiverton 30 years from now, that's all.
All right.
She's only in her 20s.
She might be retiring early.
All right, anything else?
Not looking for any action tonight, but we'll get you those Exhibits A and C as well as the lighting requirements from the planning board.
There was something else. Okay, never mind. And then we'll...
By the way, this is a recommendation. It's something that you think that the Subcommittee has not addressed, that is a view, this is a document that it can certainly be amended. And it's anticipating that that may happen, so.
So we'll have to put this on another agenda and then notify Twin Rivers, so if they wanted to do a presentation.
Please, do you want it on when Twin Rivers is ready to do it?
Yeah.
Just wanted it ready.
Mark, I'm thinking maybe the second, the second meeting in January? But if not, we could do the first. So it'd be the 27th?
The 22nd would be the second.
Okay. Okay. Or we could do the first in February.
So we'll coordinate with the, with the clerks, huh?
Yeah, and then we'll just put it on the agenda. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, just as an aside, is that Bill Gerlick's thing on the table?
It's the town.
It's the town, okay. Just checking.
All right. Anything else, Mark, on that? No?
No, nothing from us. Our, we'd like to thank the subcommittee, too, I know there was a lot of work put into that, I think one of the public members is here, so she can attest to the number of meetings. And I think we reached agreement as to everything. Hours of operation is something that has to be done on a, on a larger level, and we'll do that. But the changes that were mentioned tonight, I don't think are problematic, so hopefully we can just, we can focus on those couple of points after the meeting. The, the taxes with the tax stabilization, and we talked about that with the assessor's office, really, if it was something that was a benefit for both, if it's, if it's not, it becomes cumbersome, it's not something that we need. It wasn't a tax break, it was just for budgetal purposes, for some period of time, you would know what's coming in, we would know what our expense obligation is, but it's not something that's absolutely necessary, so we'll continue to work with the assessor's office on that analysis, and I think we'll have success in that regard.
Free to add more than billions of dollars.
All right. You can stay there, because town solicitor, Twin Rivers permitting fees discussion and possible action.
It's a follow-up from the last meeting.
We did have a meeting.
And there was a meeting that was held with Twin River representatives, council president and vice president were there.
And Christine was also there.
And, and Councilor Ryan was there also. But the issue of this building permit that was issued that said fees waived, I do think there is not a, an objection from Twin River to have that permit reissued with different language as to the fees to be charged for the inspections. And secondly, Twin River, which is in your packet, has a proposal for fees on the electric, mechanical, and plumbing permits. The fire inspections have already been addressed, building permit for Four Leaf has already been addressed, so this is the outstanding issue. These were the permits that were in question. So I'll let Mr. Russo give the proposal that came in from Twin River as a result of that meeting.
Sorry, yes, Mark.
So just, I think, starting to put in context, the folks mentioned the development term agreement, the host community agreement, the development term, and that has us, my client, agreeing to fund third-party construction plan review and inspections for all items but fire and life safety, which would be done by the fire department, as the solicitor mentioned. The contract is approved by the council with that third party, which is called Four Leaf, that allowed the building official's office, if that office elected, to carve out the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing inspections, so that those could be done with the folks who do that work in town, which is, is fine. We, we then worked with the building official's office and looked at the, what would be an appropriate fee to pay per inspection, but I think as members of the council noted, and we, I think we had a productive meeting, is that that, that payment is made, and it's your decision, it's not mine, but I'll put it in my words, that may be appropriate to pay the inspectors, but what it's not paying is overhead that the town may otherwise incur, and, and we are responsible for the town's expenses under this agreement, there's this agreement for that. So as we talk through that, you know, the different potential formulas, because I think it was, it's important to both of us to have a formula, and it was explained to us that in a normal circumstance, the monies that are paid for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing inspections, 28% would go to the inspectors to compensate them for their work, and then the balance of that, if we, you know, 28 cents on the dollar, so the balance of that dollar would go to the town for overhead. So with that formula in place, what we've proposed to the town is to take a step back and look at the MEP inspections, as the $35 going to the inspection is being the 28% in the, in the, in the fraction or the ratio, and then the 72 cents on the dollar would go to the town. So what that means, I think people who attended the meeting know that I'm not great at math, so I'll give that qualifier, but I think what that means is a total of $125 per inspection would be paid, 35 would go to the inspector, the balance would go to the town. We've set up with the, the finance director's office an escrow for that, so the building official would have, would have the discretion to release the payments to the inspectors. We would wait until the end of the project or milestones, if you think it's better, but at some point, we can look back and, and look at the log and say, okay, there's been 30 inspections, therefore what's due to the town is X. And then what we've suggested is, we started off with a $10,000 escrow, which, you know, to get started on the inspections, we've suggested to increase that to $40,000, so that way, the town is covered for the inspections and, you know, hopefully the lion's share of the overhead payment, and then we can square up at points during the project. Our preference would be to square up at the conclusion of the project, because we know exactly what it is. If the town, for some reason, would say, no, I would rather, you know, look at it every six months, or whatever you think is appropriate, that's not a problem. That's why we suggested to increase the escrow, and that way you're covered for that. So that, that is the proposal. We think that it, we think that it makes sense, and it kind of tracks what you would do in a normal situation, where we didn't, this is not a normal situation. On a smaller project, there's a formula that you use, and there's a set. On a larger project, that's in excess of a million, what the law provides, and what your fee schedule provides, is you've got to tailor the fee to, to match up with your actual expense being incurred, which on this project is, you know, when you put aside Four Leaf, it's next to impossible to do, but we, we think it's a rational proposal, and it hopefully continues to advance, where we think we've had an excellent relationship with staff, and want to further that, so we think this is a way that it mimics the formula that you use now, and kind of melds the over-a-million-dollar project formula with the, with the way you do it on a hundred million dollars. So that's where we are, you know, hopefully that's something acceptable and gets us past this, and we can talk about hours of operation, all the fun stuff we have to do.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President, I just, I'd like to just make, I guess, not really a question, but a statement. You know, obviously, I think that this is, this is a good proposal, it's going to get the town some money, but that being said, I think we need to, as a council, sit down and review the way that our formulas are calculated for these projects, and it needs to be done yesterday. And also, the more I think about this, I'm kind of confused, and I understand that, that there is some money, and it's good to have the inspectors do the work, but I also, you know, the more I think about it, I think that maybe we should have just let Twin River go with Four Leaf for an adult on everything, and get this out of the town's hands. We have so many issues going on with the building department, it's barely open as it is, and now, you know, we're focused on this project, and we're using our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing inspectors to do it, when the one single company could have easily been a pass-through right through the town, and we could be moving on from this project and not wasting our time talking about it.
But we just, we did talk about it at the meeting, too, and at any point that, and correct me if I'm wrong, at any point our inspectors say, no, this is just too much work for us, that we have talked with Twin Rivers that we might have Green Leaf take over some of this, if they feel that they can't keep up with it. It's kind of hindsight, and I agree with you, that maybe we should have talked about it a little bit more, but at any point, we agreed that if our inspectors come to Neil and say, this is just way too big of a project, that Green, and I think, Mark, you said Four Leaf, what have I called them?
Three leaf?
I've, I've called them three-leaf, too. So, at some point, and they would be, they would do it, you thought.
Oh, yeah, I think they would. I think the statement that we made at the meeting was, let's, if, if that comes to pass, if either the inspectors say they can't keep up, or the construction team says there's an issue, I mean, the first thing we'll do is air it out with Neil. If we all agree, then I think, rather than just make a unilateral decision, we'll come back to you and make the proposal that maybe it's
Definitely.
better to do it. I'm hopeful that, that the team in place can continue to do it, because it started that way, and they are doing it.
And so far, so good, so.
And so far, so good, hopefully it'll be okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
Only offer, as we discussed, make sure the town administrator has copied in on those things. And secondly, on the idea of when to do the sort of the catch-up on the money, I would recommend, just from experience, not wait till the end, I would say, put a six-month milestone, or a quarterly milestone, principally just to make sure that the building office has their exercise in going through it, and it's not something at the end of the time, and
They say, oh, my God, we didn't keep good records, or something.
That's, that's a good suggestion, and that's fine with us.
Okay.
Yes. To Paul's point, I was actually going to say that, if we wait till the end, I mean, this, the expenses, in terms of the oversight time, is happening this year, so it would be good to replenish that money into the general fund in this, you know, fiscal year. So I would be much happier with quarterly, so that, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, we're square, and then whatever goes on from there. So, and, and not just to cover the inspectors, but the, the
The overhead.
the overheads to the town. And while I understand all this, and I was not at the meeting, so I do have one question, and I do understand that, you know, Four Leaf is doing the bulk of the work. On the other hand, I do understand that there is some supervisory inspections and, and stuff that's happening between Jody and Neil. Is that part, is the compensation for that part of this agreement, or is that separate?
We intended it to be part, I'll let the council address the folks.
Yeah, actually, that, that's part of the host community agreement. Neil and Jody are keeping a log of the time that they spend on this project, and, and there is a provision for compensation for that.
Okay. And is that addressed quarterly, and not separate from this? They're doing that, I, I mean, I only say this because, I mean, and not that I'm going in for building permits, but I've heard from a number of people that, you know, Neil is up at the casino site on a pretty regular basis, so is that
Being compensated.
I don't have, maybe what makes sense is that every, maybe make it like a 90-day review, where you can review it every 90 days, go through his log, go through where we are with the escrow for the, I mean, that might be the best way to do it. I know, I know they are tracking that stuff, I just don't know where they are on it.
Okay.
They are, right?
Yeah, they are. My understanding is that they're all paid out at the same escrow.
That's correct.
So I, I would agree that every 90 days, the, all the books, the inspector's books and Neil's books get, get reviewed, and the escrow's updated.
And do we, do we know what, do we know, is there an agreement on the?
They're $35 an hour. And I think yours, if I read this correctly, it's saying that now is $90 an hour, is that what I read? What's their compensation?
I don't, we, we have not agreed to their compensation. They're going to keep a log, and then we said we'd sit down, and it's really going to be up to the town to tell us what they think is appropriate. I don't, when, when we see what, that's time
Are you talking about Jody and Neil?
Yes, so sometimes, I kind of think we ought to decide, you ought to decide that before and not at the end of the process.
Um, Madam President, it, it's $35 per inspection.
Yeah, the $35
That's not them, no.
That's not
Huh?
That's the
That's mechanical plumbing.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we ever talked about
Just briefly mention it, I mean, we just acknowledged that they were getting $35 an hour.
But not
The inspectors were getting $35 in inspection. But I think you ought to, whatever the formula is, decide it is part of this package, and you're not trying to figure it out six months from now.
Does anyone have any suggestions?
I actually thought I, maybe I read
I might have
Isn't it in here?
No.
I'm trying to think of, I don't think that we talked about arrangement, no.
So I'm reading your, your unnumbered paragraph here, at the bottom of page two, last sentence, "For each inspection, 35 would be paid to the existing mechanical, plumbing, the MAPS, to the applicable inspector, and $90 would be paid to the town to offset any additional overhead that is incurred by work performed by the building official and his assistant on the project." That isn't, I mean, aren't you proposing
Oh, wait a minute.
You're proposing $90 versus 35?
Yeah, for the inspections.
Mechanical plumbing and electrical to the applicant.
No, it says additional overhead that would be incurred by the building official and his assistant, which is what we're paying them $35 an hour, or you're paying them $35.
Tony, do you have this in front of you?
I do, yes.
The wording's weird.
The, I, I thought that went to the plumbing, mechanical
That, that has to do with plumbing, we can't, not
35 and 90 is one
Yeah, but there's been, been no, no true agreement on
But that's not what it says here, it says to offset any additional overhead that would be incurred by the building official.
Right, office.
Building official and his assistant.
Yes.
But that's on the plumbing, mechanical, and
That's on the plumbing and mechanical.
So
Oh!
So I guess we need another, I guess
Yeah.
The town needs another paragraph in here that explains what happens when, in Neil's log or in Jody's log, they charge an hour.
Yes.
So you're saying the town gets 90 bucks per inspection, so the plumber, plumber inspector gets 35, the town gets 90, that's what this is saying right now.
And it doesn't, it doesn't say what the other two guys
So we should negotiate that before the end, because right now, we got you over a barrel. When it's all done, then we don't, the barrel's gone.
Well, yeah, we just, I thought we discussed it, but I don't remember enough, but you're right.
I think $100 an hour.
So, we'll just need some kind of, um
Well, let me, if, if it's okay, if I can ask the, the office
Yeah.
what they've spent for time so far, what kind of things they're spending it on, so we can see, because, I mean, obviously, some of that, the administrator is correct, with, with regard to the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing inspections
That's what they get.
That 90 was, but they're other, they're doing other stuff.
Yes.
I know that, I just got to get a sense for what they're doing.
Okay.
And then maybe we can address
And, and that may be something in their log, is to differentiate if
They're going to have to.
Neil is going up there because the plumbing or the mechanical inspector asked him to come up there, that's different than if he's going up there to check on something that Four Leaf is doing, and they'll need to note that.
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, just to Councilor LeBeau's point, I actually think it's the other way around. I mean, as we've gone through already, that office is not open right now, and the ones who are over the barrel are the people who are trying to get building permits and trying to, you know, have inspections done, where we're now trying to negotiate a rate to dedicate resources to go to this project, which we could have essentially just passed through, directed to Four Leaf, and had our office open for this, that additional time that Neil and Jody are off doing stuff for Twin River.
I don't think
They do their daily job, though, John, they do their daily job.
Jody's not ever off, doing stuff for Twin River.
Whatever the case may be, I mean, if we're, if Twin River is, the escrow account is paying them some hourly rate, or whatever the case may be, and they're getting some overhead because they're doing something for the project, that's time that they're spent doing something on this project that they're not spent doing on any other projects.
That's not the way it's working, though.
Yeah, but this, this, what you're talking about is what, what is contemplated for the oversight of what Four Leaf is doing. This is, this doesn't go to plumbing and mechanical. Your discussion now has to go with what Neil has to do to supervise Four Leaf.
Like, to what extent is that, like, we really need to look at this log
That's what you need to know, and that's what you need to find out.
And see how often he really is up there, and
Yes.
what he's doing up there, and like, like, Mark said, maybe Mark needs to have a discussion, and we probably do, too, and what, what are you doing up there?
But they do it, they do, Neil does his daily tour, you know, the casino, first thing in the morning, does all his tours, whatever he does at the casino, whatever time he spends there, he logs, whatever time Jody spends on it, she logs, but then when the office is open, and somebody from Tiverton comes in first, because I've been there for two weeks trying to get a permit myself, so when they're, when they're there, they do their work first, we're more important, no offense, but they, they take care of the little people first, and then when the casino stuff comes up, they write their hours down, so it's not a conflict of us, John, it's, we're going to, they're going to pay whatever comes up, so it's not like Neil takes off up there and does work there and says, to hell with the Tiverton guys, because he's making money up there, it's not how it's working. If it was, I'd be squeaking, but it's really not. But I understand what you were saying, but that's not the way it was working, again, only because I've been in there trying to get a permit, and I know what they were doing.
All right. So, there's no action taken unless we can, until we get some kind of closure on what the building official's going to be charging?
Well, this is, this just goes to plumbing, mechanical, and electrical, you can approve this. Further action is going to be needed on, on what Neil is doing, really supervising Four Leaf.
So you think that we, that
Yes.
We could approve
Split here is, is the 35 and the 90.
Okay.
That takes care of those discreet inspections. What you need to do is nail down on what he's doing for the Four Leaf work.
So we probably need to put this on another agenda, just for that item?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. So we can approve this. I just didn't know if you wanted to add, add an addendum to this, whatever.
No, but I, you know, I do think sooner rather than later is, is, is better, but that's something I think that needs to be nailed down.
Okay. Well, then, at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for you. Whatever you just said, that's the motion.
To, to approve the proposal for the permitting fees for Twin Rivers?
To approve
Right.
The
Just say so moved.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Good, it worked out. Okay, town solicitor announcements?
Okay.
The first one is Sesh Drive. There were some issues that came up with this right-of-way. The question is, is whether or not it is a town road or a private right-of-way. Originally, Sesh Drive was part of this High Hill Platte. It was recorded in 1971. In 1972, the developer recorded a deed transferring the title to Sesh Drive to the town. However, later on, in 1992, there was an agreement between the town and the High Hill lot owners, and the town acknowledged that Sesh Drive was a private right-of-way, and the lot owners acknowledged that the town would not be responsible for the maintenance of Sesh Drive. The subsequent recording of that agreement, to me, converted Sesh Drive into a private right-of-way that all of the owners in this High Hill Platte have rights to, but the town does not. So this dispute and this issue that we have is a private dispute as opposed to one that the town gets involved in. I've discussed this with Mr. Anderson, we've gone over the research that we've had, and that's the conclusion from the solicitor's office.
Okay. Any questions?
Are we liable to plow that road in Stanton? Now is that on them?
In my opinion, no.
Should we leave alone stuff for them to get their own road plowed?
That's correct, yes.
Stay right out of that. We've never plowed it?
I don't think so. I have just one question. Is there a way to notify the neighbors down there who have asked about this on multiple occasions?
Do we have a list of them?
I mean, do we have a list of them? Is there a way to let them know that there's been a determination made? A number of them have asked, and
Okay.
Yeah, I think we've probably figured that out with the assessor's office, the people who live there. But I understand that there's people who don't live on that road that have also complained.
They have, I'm just wondering if there's a way to get an answer to them, a number of them have asked.
If there is, we can, we wanted to make it a public document and go from there. So the answer is yes, we can do that, notify the lot owners of the situation.
Madam President?
Sorry. Is there a private road sign associated with that road?
Well, if there is, it's not the town's responsibility to put up.
No, there is a
That would be that the property owners down there would have the responsibility for that. Because the town is specifically exempted from any maintenance, in my opinion, and includes signage.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
One more question. Is the town providing any services to the residents on that road that we shouldn't be, and that should cease immediately?
Bill?
Is it a real road? It's like this weird driveway thing, right? Well, I don't even know what it
I could, I'll just give you my two cents, and for what's worth. All right, so Sesh Drive, Tony and I have gone back and forth on it. I'm not entirely in agreement, but I'm not the solicitor, and I'm not going to swing one way or the other. We don't have any utilities on the road. Water for the lot, there's only one developed lot, that's the Lighthouse lot at the end. The other two lots are undeveloped right now, but they do front Sesh Drive. What's weird is the guy on at the end on the, on the Lighthouse actually has an address that's on High Hill, not on Sesh Drive. For, when the doctor originally did the house, he couldn't sink a well that wasn't brackish, so he moved the well, he asked permission to move the well and put it in the right-of-way, the public right-of-way, so he could have water to the lot. But, and there was provisions in the original thing that said that they could bring utilities up and down the right-of-way. What I found weird was when they wrote, like Tony said, when they wrote the maintenance agreement for the roadway, they somehow called the roadway the entire 40-foot, not just the right-of-way. So instead of what they're actually, they're maintaining is a 12-foot wide dirt road, and the right-of-way is 40 feet, and it's delineated. So what I don't really understand is how the two other homeowners or the properties are actually going to get frontage on a town right-of-way. They don't have one now, so they would have to go to the zoning board, probably, to, I don't know.
Yeah, I actually don't agree with the statement. They have rights to that, and because it was part of the platte, they obtain the frontage in it, it is permissible under the ordinance here to have frontage on a private right-of-way.
Okay, all right.
So
So, but the other, the other problem is, on the other end of, so we're talking about half of the road is developed for a driveway. The other half of the road actually abuts High Hill and land that's owned by the Tiverton Land Trust. The neighbor on the corner of Sesh and High Hill is actually clearing portions of this, which I thought was a right, public right-of-way, which is now a private right-of-way. And the neighbors are complaining about that, because it looks like Biarriel's, again, it's not perfect, but it looks like now he's clearing on land that's on the Tiverton Land Trust as well. So there's an issue on that end as well, and again, they come into my office and ask, and I don't know, but after talking to Tony, I've told Mr. Camaro, who calls me daily and asks me about that, so the word's probably gotten out down there already about the private right-of-way.
Okay. Now I skipped, are you upset, Tony?
Yes.
I skipped the town administrator's announcements. Do you have any?
Thank you.
Oh, just that I left with you, put on your table, because it came in late, Chief Lloyd provided
Yeah, I was
Some statistics on the use of the
So am I the only one that has this right now?
No, no, everybody has.
Oh, okay, all right. All right. And I don't, whoever watched the last meeting, I asked what effect the new clerk had with that billing process at the fire department, because we promoted with this, we'd have increased income. And it does, November 28th, 2016, we collected $187,000. On November 28th, 2017, we collected $256,000 up to date. So it is, it is a substantial increase, and I congratulate, I congratulate everyone involved.
Good job, Chief.
Okay, council announcement. I just wanted to say that, as you know, Council Perry is out. He has an illness, but he's doing well, I just wanted to report that. He was very open that he was going to be out with an illness. I talked to him this evening, he's feeling better, and he's hoping to come back in January. So, and he's received good news. So I just thought that people might want to know that. Town clerk, do you have anything? Councilwoman.
Do we have, this is our last meeting in December?
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to everybody. I'll leave it at that. Oh, Happy Hanukkah, I don't want to insult nobody. And Ramadan, if Dad's around.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Are we going, is Councilwoman Edwards taking us to executive session? May I ask one question first? I know that we don't have another meeting in December, and our first meeting is in January. Is there a preliminary budget that we'll get before that first meeting in January?
Yes, but you will have preliminary budget before Christmas.
Oh, thank you.
So within the next two weeks.
Thank you.
What happened with K-1?
Did I skip right over something? Oh, the town solicitor's annual report, that was just, you distributed it, is that correct?
Well, actually, no.
I'm sorry, I
I just wanted to make clear to the council that even though you have your litigation report, there's another annual report that goes out, that's at the request of the town treasurer for the auditors. And that report serves as the basis for the, you know, what you have for your, it's pending and threatened litigation. So that's what you reserve for a restricted general fund account for litigation. Now, you know, you have your report, that report goes to the auditors, they can give the analysis. It only includes those cases where there is a material claim for damages, and I have my assessment in that. That is not, and the reason this is on, first, I want you to know I've done it, but secondly, it's also different than the litigation report. Litigation report has more cases on it, because there are cases on there where the town is not facing damages of any sort.
Anything else? I'm sorry. Councilwoman Edwards?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session. Council President, Town Administrator, collective bargaining, 42465A2, update on negotiations, IAAF.
Second, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Continuing in closed executive session, town solicitor, litigation, 42465A2, distribution of litigation report.
Second, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.